Good afternoon, and welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law in the zoning ordinance of the city of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decisions of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting, it's currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff report, and recommendations. Copies of these are available on the trays on my far left. We'll work out of a six-member board today. Brooke Rosenberg, who'll be on my far right, is absent today, but next to him is Cindy Smith, and next to him, fighting out of the blue corner, just kidding, is Tom Clark, Sr. On my far left is Jake Christensen, next to him is Mel Pins, next to him is Linda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal, on my left is Michael Kelly. Representing City Staff, we have Bert Drost, and there's Sue Ann here, there she is in the back, Sue Ann Donovan, the zoning enforcement officer, and Jason Van Essen, the city planner. I didn't see, he's not okay. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right, and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment, and the board will deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the Permit and Development Center to apply for any building permits. And thanks again, Bert. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones out there, we ask that you turn them off, or at least put them on vibrate, because they get to be very disruptive to the process here. We will be taking a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe if needed. As I mentioned in my comments, we have a consent agenda. Bert, we got one that we're going to change, that's item three.
Mr. Chair members of the board, item number three is the conditional use permit for the two antennas atop the Plymouth Place Tower. We've had several comment cards come back in opposition, and some neighbors are going to be here today to speak on that, so that'll have to be a discussion item.
Okay. Do we need to vote to push it over, or is that? No, just take that one. Okay. That'll leave us items one, an exception at 1911 Des Moines Street; item two, an exception at 4221 Beaver Hills Drive; item four, it's a variance at 3800 Merle Hay Road; item five, an exception at 4309 Beaver Hills Drive; and item six, a variance at 3207 Douglas, as the items are on the consent agenda. We're going to vote for on these based on the staff reports, and we're going to vote on them all at once, unless somebody out here is here to speak in opposition to either of those that I named off. That's items one through six with the exclusion of item three. Is anybody here to speak out against of any of those items? Any board members have any issues? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the exceptions and variances requested in items one, two, four, five, and six, as presented on the consent agenda, subject to their compliance with the conditions as listed in the staff reports.
Will you hear a second?
A second motion.
Been moved in second, it is there any further discussion? Alls in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing, so if you're here to, if this is one of your appeals, they've been approved, you're welcome to sit through and watch your city at work, or you can go and start a nice afternoon outside. Thank you. Item three is a conditional use permit and exception at 4111 Ingersoll.
Mr. Chair members of the board, item number three is a request for a conditional use permit to allow two antennas to be installed on top of the Plymouth Place residential tower. It's a 12-story tower, measures 132 feet tall. They're wanting two 27-foot-tall antennas on top. By right, they're allowed to have antennas protrude up to 20 feet from the top of the building, which is why, as you'll see from the photos, that there are several such towers and other equipment up there right now. But because these two want to exceed 20 feet by seven feet, they need this conditional use permit. And as, one of the criteria for the conditional use permit is that they be on a 10-acre parcel, which this parcel is only 2.62 acres, so it needs an exception to that area requirement. The subject property is the Plymouth Place residential tower at the corner of 42nd Street and Ingersoll. They're proposing, there's two towers here, you can see one tower here and one tower here, and then you can see all the other existing equipment that falls under this 20-foot line, this dashed line here is the 20-foot line, so everything below that is permitted and is allowed, but because these two towers want to stick seven feet above that line, they need this conditional use permit. This is just the diagram, north is up, that shows where they would be located. They would be located towards the, I guess, south and west, so away from the residential properties, the north and east. And then this here just shows that the service equipment for these antennas would actually be within a room on the 12th floor of the building. A lot of times when we have communication towers, there's a little 10-by-10 surface building at the base, but all of that equipment would be internal to the building. Here's a, I guess, description of what these antennas are. They're a three-inch diameter, like fiberglass antenna that would be 27 feet tall. And here's some site photos. This one's taken from 41st Street at the base. You can't really see any of the equipment at the top from this perspective, mostly because this shot was taken so close to the building, but, and this was taken from south of the Plymouth Congregational Church's parking garage. You can start to see some of the existing equipment and satellite dishes that are up there, that are all under 20 feet above the top of the structure, so they're allowed. And then this was looking from, I believe, Woodland Avenue to the west. You can start to see some of the equipment. This is really the best view, and so those two statistics that would be up here would be really most visible from this drive, hardwood drive. And then this is just a zoomed-in photo. You can see there's quite a bit of clutter up there right now. And these are the consent cards, maps that are being passed around, and there's also an email being passed around right now as well. From staff's perspective, we felt that this is the appropriate place for these towers. We feel that putting them on top of an existing building is a better alternative than constructing an entirely new tower for these, because since it's on the top of the building, it has a height of 159 feet, which we feel putting them up there is better than having a separate 159-foot tower. So we've recommended approval, subject to three conditions. One, that they're installed in accordance with the building code and with all necessary permits. Two, that any unused equipment or similar materials on the roof of the building must be removed at the time these antennas are installed. Like I showed you, there is quite a bit of stuff up there. I assume that it's all being used right now, but we're just going to ask that they verify that everything up there is being used, and that if it's not being used, that it should come down. And then number three, any antenna shall be removed within six months after it may become unused or obsolete. Any questions?
I have a question. Let me understand, if they used, if it's been designated a historical building, and it received tax credits to do renovations to keep their historical status, I didn't think when you did historical things that anybody could make any changes, not us, not anybody. I mean, to me, that's a, we've got a conflict here.
I don't know what historic status it has, do you know, Jason? Because it's not on the register.
Jason Van Essen with plenty of stuff. Did it receive historic tax credits for some renovation? Is that what you're alluding to?
That's what, I'm just reading the letter, and that's what it was, that's what it said, that it received his.
But the other thing, the other thing to keep in mind with communication equipment is it goes through a federal 106 review, which is, looks at preservation-related concerns. The state receives those as well as the city, so I mean, it would be looked at, and if it did receive state or federal credits, the SHIPO staff, or the same staff that would be looking at that, would also be participating in the review of tax credits. I don't think we know with this building, the history of the tax credit, you know.
Did you see the letter that came in?
Linda, I think I can answer a question. I have two buildings that are both on the register, as well as have a radio antenna added to them. As Jason described, they have to go through the process, get reviewed, make sure that they're in compliance with the historic character. I don't, I don't know the status of this particular building's nomination or designation, but it happens all the time.
Jake, who?
I'm sorry. There wasn't, another example that is coming forward is the water tower up in, off of Hickman, up in the northeast, what's the park, Tower Park? There's a tower antenna on that, and I know that they're looking at doing more, so I mean, it does, and that actually is on the national register. It's a listed structure, so that towers do get approved on historic buildings.
And is it just towers? Because like, if I have a house that's on the historic, I can't even change the windows.
Well, the, if it's national register, that's an honorary thing unless you're using federal funds.
Okay.
Local district, that's where we get involved with.
Mel.
Just a clarification here, Bert. I see in the general communication probably what the cards went out and said, it says, installation of two 27-foot-tall communications towers. Now, if I got that card, I'd think of like some tripod thing painted red with zigzag that, you know, King Kong could climb up and cause chaos, but.
Antenna probably would have been a better.
Right, but then I see in some other staff communication, and in, I think, the ordinance that referenced antenna/towers, and this is, did you say a three-inch diameter?
Yeah, it's a three-inch diameter fiberglass tube.
Right, okay. So, and I might ask the applicant some questions, but, you know, I envisioned something with a bunch of metalwork and guy wires hanging off it, but pretty much this isn't an antenna that's going to be on top of the roof, correct?
Yeah, the reason it said communication towers, that's what the code calls it, is a conditional use permit for communication towers.
All right, thank you.
I just have a question, I think some clarification maybe. Under staff recommendation number three, any antenna shall be removed within six months after it may be unused or obsolete. Who determines that? Is that just a, do you just depend on the applicant, or the person who has the antenna to?
Yeah, it's probably on their honor, then if we ever got a complaint about, or if
somebody else wanted to put something up there, we might ask them to look at it, and we can see this condition that says, well, it should have came down years ago.
It'd be hard to monitor that.
Yeah, but we've, we know it's hard to monitor, but we thought it's better to at least have some teeth.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Rob Denner, from the city of West Des Moines, 8055 Mills Civic Parkway. I'm the assistant chief in charge of WestCom, the consolidated communication center that serves not only West Des Moines, but Clive, Urbandale, and Norwalk. We're the entity making this application today. It's for our public safety communication system that supports police, fire, and ambulance in those four cities. This upgrade that we're doing to our radio communication system, we have an analog system today on a single site. Because of the growth of the suburbs out west, we've expanded the system and need a site further east here to support the ambulances transporting patients to hospitals here in Des Moines, police coming to the courthouses here in Des Moines, or Des Moines Police, or any activities that would require us to come this direction out of the western suburbs. So the Plymouth Place site has been a very good site for us that provides sort of that mix between getting out of the western suburbs and providing coverage, radio system coverage for these public safety vehicles as they come here into Des Moines. It is a good option. We've explored several other sites in terms of not having to put up a tower somewhere using existing elevated real estate that gets us up in the air and gets us the required coverage that we need. We really feel like Plymouth Place was a good site to land on, after some of the other sites didn't work out so well for us. Is there any questions or anything I could answer?
Yeah, you've got an analog system now, where's that antenna located?
It's on our south 50th Street water tower in West Des Moines, about 50th and Civic.
Okay. So you don't have anything on Plymouth Place now?
We don't. The city of Des Moines does, though. Both fire and police have radio there that are actually going to share the room that we're using.
Okay. No?
Just as a follow-up to something I alluded to, from the staff report, it sounds like this will be about a three-inch in diameter antenna, is that correct?
Correct. The actual antenna is 24 feet long and three inches in diameter over the entire length. The extra three feet that make it 27 is, we're actually reusing some of Sprint Nextel's mounting hardware up on the roof. It's sort of a skid configuration that's weighted down with cinder blocks that we're going to attach to. That's the extra three feet that takes us to 27 feet.
Any guy wires or other support for that?
No, not at all.
Okay, so it's kind of a self-supporting?
Absolutely.
Antenna, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Mark Siegfried, 4105 Woodland Avenue. Not really here to speak in opposition, I just wanted to clarify, the email, which I think went around pretty late, I'm sorry.
Thank you, we were going to ask if it was you, so.
Yeah, I live one block due north of Plymouth Place in the, in the north of Grand Neighborhood, and we can see some of the clutter from the French porch, but that's really not my issue to be here. Having talked to several people in the Historic Preservation Office and the architects involved on and off on the project, I'm not a historic expert, so I'm not speaking with entire facts, I'm speaking because I'm concerned, because I do think the applicant applied for historic designation for the building. It's not like, it's not like Sherman Hill where you can't change your windows. You can make alterations, but if it involves federal licensing or federal funding at any level, which I believe the West Des Moines communication system does and did, it is, does have an FCC license, if those are involved, I think that does trigger review by SHIPO or the state office. I have no idea whether they would have any beef with this at all, but as part of the process that garnered the applicant the tax credits and the historic designation, which is, we consider very valuable and support, as part of that process, we're just concerned that basically your decision today not be considered, trigger a green light for construction until the rest of the process is investigated. And again, I don't swear that they have to be reviewed by historic, but I'm about 95% sure, having talked to the people there, needs to be evaluated for that. May have nothing to do with your decision today, which is probably zoning considerations, 20 feet, 27 feet.
Right.
History, not your deal, but I just wanted the board to be aware of that, and see if it had any impact at all on their decision, because it needs to be part of the transparency of the process.
Well, we appreciate all input anyways, so.
Yeah, but the other, the other issue I do have as an individual is that anything you can do to reduce the amount of clutter and the amount of antennas and towers, I'm sure this has come up to you before, Des Moines has its entirely separate emergency response system, so they have towers up there. Now, West Des Moines, improving their system, they're putting towers up there. Anything, so, you know, my emergency calls will probably not go through this WestCom system. So anything to reduce the clutter, and I appreciate your questions about guy wires exactly what it looks like, that's also a constant concern, particularly in a historic district, which the area around this building is also designated. If it's your issue, take it up otherwise.
Got a question, Mel?
Yeah, Mark, just an observation, I saw in the profile diagram there, it looked like there was a little star. Is there a lighted, like, a star on top of the building there?
Plymouth Place has had a, has a holiday light up there for as long as I can remember. It's almost exactly the same height as the antenna, that being your point of view.
So it still lights up and everything?
It still lights up, close to Christmas.
I guess I'm not looking close enough at that. I'm assuming that's historic, then, right? If it's been there for a long time.
Again, not my question, question for an expert. And whether or not it's clutter or not, that's everybody's opinion.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
Looks good, thanks, Mark. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? You got three minutes, answer any more questions, or? And I just have one question.
I did forget to mention that the Nextel site that was on top of Plymouth Place has been abandoned by Nextel, and that's the room actually on the 12th floor that we'll be occupying with our equipment and the city of Des Moines' equipment. But also, there are a number of structures up there on top, the antenna systems that did belong to Nextel, some satellite dishes that belonged to Plymouth Place, that we've agreed to as part of our process of reusing some of the old Nextel equipment to help Plymouth Place clean up that roof a little bit with all the other stuff that's been abandoned and is no longer in use.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is Plymouth Place, are you, you're going to be working in conjunction with Plymouth Place to clean up, do you have any idea how many towers that come down?
I don't, other than the two, there's two very large, they're either eight or 10-foot in diameter satellite dishes that are coming down, and then the panel antennas that were Nextel's, that's the mounting equipment that we'll be reusing up there. And then a couple on the penthouse structure, there's some smaller dishes, some four-foot dishes that are coming off of there.
Okay. If you, when, if this gets approved, I would hope that you'd relay all that information to city staff, so, you know, we know we made the right decision cleaning this place up.
We can do that.
Okay. Anything? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, closes the public portion, go to board decision.
Mr. Chair, I have moved approval.
It sounds like this might actually wind up being an improvement, and it sounds like we have antennas rather than towers, per se, so that alleviates any concern I would have, and it's up to them to determine if they remain eligible for their tax credits. So I would second Jake's motion.
Okay, then moved in second, is there any further discussion? Alls in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Hopefully, we have both sides out here and clean up the clutter. Item seven, it's continued over from the February meeting, it's a conditional use permit and variance at 1103 Army Post Road, and we do have a communication on that from
Mr. Chair members of the board, this item has been continued a couple of times, so it might look familiar. The request is for converting an existing limited food sales establishment, otherwise known as a grocery store, converting it to a liquor store. The difference between those two is a liquor store generates more than 40% of their sales from the sale of alcohol or tobacco products. They're currently, they've been operating as a small grocery store for the past few years, and they haven't been able to meet that 40% threshold, so they're coming in for a conditional use permit to be a liquor store. The site is located on the north side of Army Post Road, just to the west of Southwest 9th Street. It's in a little strip center with a restaurant use, and then the Southport Tavern at the other end of the building. Here's a photo of that building, you can see the business we're dealing with today, and the restaurants, and the tavern at the east end. The photo of the building. Back in November of 2011, they had requested a conditional use permit for a liquor store, and it was denied by the board at that time as well. And so they've, they've been in operation since then, they've wanted to establish a good track record and come back and ask for it at this time. And here's the consent map that reflects the cards going around. As you probably are all aware, last year, the city council revised the conditional use permit criteria for liquor stores, and one of those new criteria is that they must be at least 500 feet from any church, park, school, or licensed daycare. This site does not meet that separation distance requirement. There is a church within 500 feet, just across Army Post Road, and then another requirement is that they're at least a quarter of a mile from any existing business with a Class E liquor license, and they're within a quarter mile of the Quick Trip that's at the corner of Army Post and Southwest 9th Street. So in order to grant the conditional use permit for the liquor store, the board would also have to grant the variances to those separation requirements. As staff, we feel that they don't meet the criteria necessary for granting the variances. One of the tests of a variance is that they have to demonstrate there's no other economic use of the property. We feel at Zone C2, there's a whole list of other uses that are permitted on this property, so we don't feel that denying the variances would deem the property without any value. So because they don't meet the criteria for the variances, we've recommended denial of the conditional use permit. So, but the second part of this item is a request for a conditional use permit that would allow them to continue operating as a limited food sales establishment, where they would generate less than 40% of their sales from tobacco and alcohol. As part of the recent council adopted changes, they've put the deadline of December 31st of 2013 that all of these little grocery stores around the city must obtain a conditional use permit. So later this year, we'll probably be seeing a whole, a number of those types of requests, but part B of this is to grant them the conditional use permit for a limited food sales establishment. With that, they're not required to have any separation distances, so they do meet the criteria for granting that conditional use permit. So our staff recommendation of part B is actually approval of a limited food sales establishment, and we've made that subject to five conditions. One, that they keep the sales of alcohol and liquor to under, or alcohol and tobacco to under 40% of their overall sales. Two, any limited food sales establishment shall be limited to a 2,610 square-foot area. Any sale of liquor, wine, or beer should be in accordance with a proper license obtained through the city clerk and approved by city council. Four, any renovations of the building shall be in compliance with the building code. And five, the conditional use permit shall be subject to amendment or revocation if the zoning officer determines the business has been a nuisance. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. One of the, the applicant is the owner of the whole property, isn't he, is he not?
We've, the applicant we've listed is the title holder of the property, since the conditional use would go with the land.
Right, and so he's responsible for the other businesses there in the strip.
Right.
My understanding is there's been a problem with the bar. There were a couple of murders there, and it doesn't seem that anything has happened to stop the nonsense at that location. I mean, I don't know what the landlord feels like, but I think if you have a tenant that fails to keep an orderly house, you can evict him.
Right. Right.
Uh, I don't know that I'm too excited about the staff's recommendation to allow some more sales of liquor on the premises, when he can't keep control of what he has.
Right. And really, we're, our recommendation is just that he continues to operate.
As he has.
As he is, and actually, it would be to reduce the sale of liquor, because right now, he's been exceeding the 40% that he's supposed to be under, so we've recommended approval subject to him getting it back down to where it should be.
I just got a couple, Bert, and I'm going to springboard off what Tom said. That tavern, weren't there people always leaving, going over there, buying more liquor, and going into the neighbor to the east backyard?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you're picking up what I'm thinking here.
That's why that fence had to go up, to keep them out of there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. This is a pretty bad way to have those two in combination with each other. That really is not, and plus, the second thing I got to ask is, do, when they come in and apply for these conditional use, are they told at that point that, you know, you, you're trying to apply for something, you got a church that's less than 500 feet, and this is what the city council's ordinance is?
Yeah.
And they still come in and?
And we've, we've sat down with their attorney and explained all of that, but they feel this is their only option. They've kind of gotten established foot there, they have a lease, they want to try to make it go on this property, even though they know it's within the separation.
But they want to change the use of the business, so, okay. You know what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Your area, Mel?
Oh, yeah. Bert, has there been an audit or a review of their current percentage status of sales?
I'd have to let Sue answer that. I, I don't know that there has been. I think they've been pretty upfront that they're not meeting the.
Okay, okay, which I appreciate.
Chair members of the board, Suzanne Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. We have not conducted an audit. I do believe that this was a voluntary effort to come in and get the liquor license, so that they could sell the Class E liquor.
Okay.
Because they can't even the 6040.
And Sue, while, while you're here, and I don't know if this was mentioned, I might have missed it while I was reviewing the notes here, but when we saw this more than a year and a half ago, there was some discussion about, there were signage issues there, they weren't compliant with zoning, they were selling some things inside the store that they weren't allowed to sell, and there was a little bit of concern about a pattern of noncompliance with the zoning ordinance. Has anything changed since then? Have you been back out there or seen any improvements to that?
I have not heard anything from the inspectors that have been on site. This is a new owner.
Okay.
I believe there was some confusion about names.
Okay.
Which is a cultural issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I firmly believe, though, that this area, as previously mentioned, is troublesome, and adding more liquor to the site is probably not going to help the neighborhood.
Right. And one, one additional question, you know, this parcel does contain, you know, Southport Lounge there, or whatever, and also Cheese Castle Pizza, which is very good, but the parking there have, do they have sufficient parking for the square footage of what goes on on that parcel now? It always seems like it's more than extra crowded on evenings and, and weekends there.
I haven't had a chance to look at parking calculations. At one point, that would have been reviewed. Now, have parking calculations changed over time, and they don't have enough to meet now? I don't know.
But there's not necessarily a trigger here with what we're talking about that would require a review of parking or anything?
No, this is strictly on the use of this tenant bay to serve alcohol.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Afternoon, my name's Lloyd Ogul, representing the applicant, 301 East Walnut Street, Suite 2, Des Moines, Iowa. To back up a little bit, a little bit of confusion, the applicant is the leaseholder of the single bay on, that, that holds the convenience store, South Side Food Mart. And we were, they were here a little over a year ago, and in an effort to get a conditional use permit at that time. At that time, they're a new owner. They took over a property that was admittedly a bad actor, that there'd been a lot of trouble with, selling allegedly adult businesses, junk and debris, issues with loitering and whatnot. And at that time, most of the discussion, the staff presentation, was about the fact that the new applicants had names that appeared to be the same last name as the prior owner, and that there was suspicion that they related to them, and this was just a trick to try and get someone else new in front of them. At that time, Suzanne Donovan said, you know, well, if what you're saying is true, and they're not related to these people, although we believe they are, she said, quote, you know, "Establish your record, be there for a year, and come back and show good citizenship." So, that's what this applicant is, is here to do today. Unfortunately, in, in turning year, the sand kind of shifted out from under them. The city councils, you know, reduced the, the distances from things like churches. Well, last year, when they were here, there was no church in that location. Since then, a church has moved in to a retail space and operates a church there across the street. I don't think this is one of those businesses where you have a troubled business. This is a family-owned business. I want to introduce them to you. It's Sean, you want to stand up? Sean Singh, his wife, Gernan Carr, and her, their son, Nishan Singh, operate this family-owned business. They also own one other store in town, Last Stop Beverage Shop on the east side. They also own one business in Davenport, Iowa. They take great pride in running a, a clean operation, and they've cleaned up that site. There's a lot of people here today to testify that, including the neighboring business that runs a pizza shop in between, and residents in, in the area. And the bottom line is this, this is, this is the business that these people are in, and they know how to do it, and they know how to do it properly. I do have, I wanted to show several letters where the administrative alcoholic beverage division sends in testers to try and see if they'll sell to underage people, and I have compliance checks where they congratulate them on the fact that they did not sell to anyone underage. I don't know if you can show those. They also care about the community in which they operate. They've taken $2,000 in their profits and donated them to the Stu Baker Elementary Schools there in the area. The other thing I don't put a lot of weight, you probably won't put a lot of weight to, but the last time when they came in, they did, they did have a little petition, they asked people to sign in, in support of their conditional use permit. For what it's worth, we would, we would submit that again. So, several things happened. One, we'd like to point out that the, it leaves the Quick Trip down the street, applied and got their liquor license after they, this site had applied and gotten their liquor license. Our client's been in business for 14 years, and in terms of having minority-owned, family-run businesses in this town, these are the type of people that you, you want to have running these types of establishments, because they're responsive. Since, in the time period they've run this store, there have been no issues with police cars and, and whatnot. Granted, there may be some issues with the other business at the other end, the, end of the, the strip. These guys can only do so much, but they don't serve, they don't, there's not traffic anymore, they don't serve intoxicated people coming out of that bar. There is a six-foot-high fence behind that property. And would point out, if you look at the aerial, there is no natural ingress and egress behind there, regardless of what business you run there, it's not going to have any impact, one way or the other, on that, that neighborhood. But again, you know, the ordinance changed in 2012, since the last time we were here, that decreased the separation requirements for church and, and other establishments selling alcohol. And again, not only did ordinance change, but this, this church moved into this retail location last year. Again, there's a six-foot fence behind the residential area. They're, they're open to any type of additional restrictions you would want to put on a conditional use permit, limit it just to that part of that structure, you know, whatever would make you feel comfortable, make it conditional, make them come back next year in front of you again, and, and demonstrate, continue to demonstrate that, that good citizenship. They are, they are not a nuisance, and you're going to hear people to say that since they've been here, they, they've really cleaned things up, and, and they're doing everything they can to be a good businessman and, and good neighbor. As far as, you know, giving them a, a permit to operate a convenience store where you're selling only 40% of your revenue from alcohol or tobacco, as a practical manager, reality is, it's a death sentence for the business. It's not a viable business model in that location. You cannot operate a 2,600 square foot convenience store that sells alcohol, tobacco, where, where you're going to be able to meet that requirement. So, the reality of, and let's just be honest, if this isn't granted, it'll likely will, will mean a shutdown of this business. You know, these people, their age, to ask them to come in and, and invent a new business in that spot, and, you know, they're under a 10-year lease, where they're paying over $2,600 a month rent on that, to ask them to try and come up with a whole new business model, you know, it's really not practical, and, and the result is, is to shut it down. You know, I, I hope the process of the city council, and, and you all do with this whole thing, you know, again, the city reduced those separation requirements, they obviously wanted more scrutiny placed on, on these, these independent stores of this type, and I think rightfully so. But I think you should be looking at each of these individually, and if you've got a bad actor, and there's been issues, and you have a neighborhood association, and people show up and complain about it, which you don't in this case, then deny those conditional use permits. But, you know, this, this is, this family's means of income, again, they take pride in their business, they, they want to continue to operate it exactly as they've operated since they, since they became owners about two years ago, and, and they really hope that they'll be in the opportunity to continue to prove that, that good citizenship. Would I like to address any questions?
Any questions? Mel?
Lloyd, I appreciate your, your presentation. Couple brief questions that I would have for you. What is the name of the current business?
Well, it's, the DBA is South Side Food Mart, the LLC is Ammon LLC, which, by operation, how the application works, they, they applied, the, the property owner signs on that, that application.
Okay.
But again, I, I would point out, it's possible to conform that conditional use permit specifically to this leasing of Ammon LLC, and put additional restrictions on things that would prevent, if you've got issues with concerns about the property owner not leasing land to a, a good business, to put additional restrictions on it that prevent that conditional use permit from being, being granted or continued to any, any other entity. But, but again, this is the first of a lot of these you're going to see.
Okay, all right. And I have another question for you here. You've seen the staff recommendation here. Let's say that we deny the appeal in part A, but we would approve what, kind of what's called part B. Okay, we'll give you a conditional use permit for a limited food sales establishment where less than 40% comes from, you know, liquor, beer, wine, tobacco. As, as you mentioned, if we don't approve this, they'll probably close.
Yes.
So, if we would approve the part B, that's not good enough, they'll probably close.
That's correct. They're, they're not going to be able to meet that requirement.
Well, and, and I don't want to pick things apart here, but if the business is called South Side Food Mart, I'm, I'm missing the food. Where is the food mart?
That's.
Is, is intent pretty much to run what the sign has said for the last five years, that it's a liquor and tobacco store?
The, the reality is what, what the reality is. I mean, absolutely, that's what, that's what the revenue is.
Okay, because we got plenty of convenience stores to sell, Twinkies, oh wait, we don't sell those anymore. We got plenty of convenience stores to sell, snack food, and bread, and milk, so the intent is, they do want to run a liquor and tobacco store here, correct?
And I think, yeah, and I think the intent of the.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that's clear, because we have had cases, oh, well, I'm still going to focus on dairy, and food, and staples, you know, on a quote food mart, man, when 90% of your shelf space is alcohol, tobacco, I'm not going to call you a food mart. But I, I do have a question here, Lloyd, and it isn't as much for your, your owner here, and I understand the families here. Is the property owner the landlord here, and any support?
Uh, I don't know.
Is he here, to anybody's knowledge? You mentioned they take care of the place, they work really hard, they pay $2,600 a month in rent.
Correct.
Just real quick math, that's like 300 and some thousand over 10 years is what you're going to pay for rent in your lease. And when I look at this, we got torn awnings, faded canopies here. I mean, you're paying a lot of money for a guy, if I drive by here, I'd go, the property owner doesn't really take care of this. I wouldn't see this on South 50th Street in West Des Moines. So, I, I have more of a hang-up with the landowner, and what they've been doing here, and how this does or does not fit into the community as an asset.
And I would encourage you, if that's, if that's the sticking point, put additional restrictions that require additional upkeep on the property, and give them a chance to work with the owner to, to, to improve the, the real estate, if that's.
Under a quid pro quo, that's what I would want to do, but I don't know if I would have the authority to do that, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's a concern that I think many of us have when we look at any kind of land use, not just what it is, but how it fits in. If I saw, if I saw, you know, a doll's wine and spirits store with a nice canopy, and well taken care of, well landscaped, I probably wouldn't be as concerned. But if I drove by this coming into town to visit someone, as my relatives do when they come see me, and trip, and drove by this, I would think this doesn't reflect very well on this side of town.
I made a couple comments. First of all, that, I don't think that sign is, that signage is accurate, Mel.
When, when, when was this picture taken?
That was the previous, under the previous owner, a couple years, probably a couple years ago.
For staff, when was this picture taken? This is a staff picture of this year. So, that was 60 days ago, no more. So, things have changed since then, you have new signage up? Have the canopies been repaired?
And they don't have any control over the outside. They, they did remodel the inside.
I'm guessing they don't. Okay. If we did want to look at approving this, I see we got signs all over in the windows to a certain degree, that, that may be allowed by right, I'm not sure, but, but once again, just maybe not the best image. Is there any image that they could work on themselves here?
Well, and I'm, I'm not sure that, again, that how that is, but I do believe, and Mike may confirm, that with, you do have some discretion with the issuance of a conditional use permit. You could put additional restrictions, say you can only get it if, if the sign comes down, if there's not stuff in the windows. I, I believe you would have that authority.
Perhaps we can discuss that then, so. All right, well, Lloyd, thanks for, thanks for answering my questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Are going to be multiple people, or just two? Yeah, if you just line up, that'd be.
My name is Mike Pash, I'm one of the owners of Cheese Castle, my address is 5301 Southwest 9th. And I want to start off saying, even though this picture is from January, there's, Southport doesn't exist anymore, that's under new ownership, it's now called Overboard. It's the owner that we bought Cheese Castle from, Matt Williams, really nice guy, and it's a totally different atmosphere at Southport, so that's a different atmosphere. But I, I really want to come here and talk about the people. I, I'm at Cheese Castle every single day, so I, I interact with these people probably every other day. I have my grandson go in this, in the store, it's a candy store to him, and these are the nicest people you'll, you'll ever meet. Everybody that works there, not just one or two of the people that work there, but every single person that's there, I mean, they're, they're my friends on Facebook, I mean, they're more than just associates to me, they're actually friends to me. And really, I, I don't see how there can be a problem, because when I go into the store, and usually it's to buy candy for my grandson, but just the way they come off, and I think it relates to how the customers are there, too. I mean, I, it, it's a nice friendly atmosphere, and it rubs off to everybody that comes in and out of the establishment, it really does. So.
Just a quick question for Mike. Mike, now, your, your sign's always a catchy one for me to even find. Are you gonna?
Yeah.
Put a bigger sign out there yourself?
This kind of shows how it is, you can't really see the Cheese Castle sign very well. We just got the, the empty unit beside us, we're going to make a dining room there. So, we are, along with that, when that's put in, we're going to have a sign in the awning there, so, yeah.
That's because my wife comes in and buys pizza all the time, or anything, yeah.
And I like the little endorsement you gave us, that was great.
Well, it was not an endorsement, it was just an observation, just want to be clear. But Mike, have you seen, in, you know, in all honesty, without adding anything to it, you know there've been concerns here in the past? In fact, I think the murder being referenced, the person died next door at the auto parts.
Definitely, that was.
In the auto parts, they, they got stabbed and wound up over there at the auto, right?
And.
And I know that was some time ago.
I've definitely seen a difference, even, even before Southport closed, it did get a little better before it closed, but that only. But that owner, pretty much the landlord, was having, was very frustrated with them. So, he did take some actions, he didn't really want them there anymore. And then Matt came in, and Matt's a really nice guy, one of the former owners of Cheese Castle, and it's a totally, it's more of a sports bar now and stuff.
Okay.
So...
So, Matt runs the bar, he's the owner of that bar business.
Really, really nice.
It's called Overboard?
It's called Overboard now. So, it has a sign that says Overboard on it now.
Okay.
So, that's a different, right there. And the way the liquor store is, I've seen a change in there, so I was there as they changed ownership too. And that's been a different atmosphere as well. I mean, I think it's a lot more positive. Just, you know, because of the way they come off with everybody, they're so friendly, that rubs off to everybody that comes in and out of there too, as a customer. It really does, I've noticed that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm his daughter, Shanda Pash, and...
Need your address too?
Eight oh-two East County Line Road, Des Moines, Iowa. So, not far from the address of where they're at. And my son, his grandson, is the one that goes in there. I would say that all their liquor is behind the counter. And so, I feel comfortable with bringing my son in there, who's five years old, and let him wander around their aisles that has food and candy. And we go in there just to get bug juice and candy, and they're very polite. And I don't think that they should be shut down, so I think they're doing a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Ellen Ranker, fifty-two thirty-five Chapel Court in Pleasant Hill. I work with Amcon Distributing, and we sell products to this store and his other accounts. I've known him for over thirteen years. I've been with Amcon for thirteen years. And that's why I've seen him on East Euclid in a store, and then he moved on to Ames. He's moved to Davenport, he's come here, and really, he runs an outstanding business. If you walk up and down a Hy-Vee's and Fairways, you'll see liquor and beer and wine all up and down the aisles. Not here. He put everything behind the counter. So, not only is it for safety, but the kids aren't going to touch it and handle it. And I think that is a positive aspect of this business. All of the tobacco products, you cannot touch, it's behind the counter. Ask them, how many times the police have come in and checked for tobacco non-compliance? What's their record? How about liquor? What is their compliance there, or non-compliance, every time they stop in? How many times have they been cited? Ms. Smith, how many times would you think they've been cited in the past year?
I'm assuming zero times from looking at the...
You're right, zero. This is a fine business. But I agree with you, sir. Maybe let's clean it up, let's make it more desirable to people coming in. But as a business itself, I couldn't ask for any, any better.
Thank you.
My name is Nishan Singh. I'm from forty-eight twelve Norfolk Drive, Bentendorf, Iowa, and my family runs this business. For the past thirteen years, my parents have gotten up every morning, early morning, to go work and break their backs just so they could make my brother and I American dream come true. They put us through college, they've worked really hard. And in the past thirteen years, every single penny that they've earned is from honesty and pure hard work. So, Mr. Pins, when you talk about like, you know, the attraction of the building, one thing that I would like to mention is, if you walk inside the building today, compared to, you know, what it was when we took over, it's been completely redesigned. We've painted, we've added new shelves. It's a very attractive store compared to what it was, you know, several years ago.
Sure.
So, the decision you make today, I ask that you don't make it based off, you know, what was happening there, you know, a couple of years ago. I want the decision to be made based off my parents' record and their style of business. So, that's kind of what I wanted to share with you guys. If you guys have any questions for me, I can kind of personally answer any questions because I've been so closely related to the business.
I have a question. If, and I have no idea where we're going with this, but if you were allowed to have it be a liquor store, would the liquor still stay behind the counter? Or would it then be put out and be just like a regular liquor store?
It would remain behind the counter, ma'am.
So, if it were allowed, that could be written into the requirement that no change of liquor space? Are you going to, you're not going to add any more liquor? It would remain the same?
It would remain the same. It would remain, what it is right now, it would remain the same. I only wish we could put Twinkies back in, but...
Right, see, yeah, go hostess, yeah. Mr. Singh, a question on, you had mentioned your family's good reputation. What other stores do your, does your family operate in Des Moines itself?
In Des Moines? Last Stop, Last Stop Beverage.
That's on East University there, right, about East Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-Seventh or so? Okay, alright, okay.
And, I mean, we've been all around Iowa, so...
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
Chair, members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. I'm sure these people are very nice people. I have no doubt that they have good intentions and they're nice people. They just bought Last Stop, we have no history with them at either place for very long. I think it should be pointed out, this is a council-directed ordinance. The council feels strongly about controlling the sale of alcohol in the city of Des Moines. You're charged with granting a variance of an ordinance, that's a high standard to reach. They have to prove that there's no economic value to that property if they're not granted the variance. They have not proven that. They haven't even raised that issue. They said they may have to move or go out of business in this location, and they can move and go out of business and move somewhere else. The landlord can rent this to somebody else who can use it as a C2 use. That's what we're faced with. I don't think we should take it lightly when the council has an ordinance, passes an ordinance, and raises the bar to a variance level and charges us to enforce that ordinance. That's what we're here for. December eleventh, you got a communication from the mayor regarding this issue and reminding us in the board what our charge is. I'm here to enforce, I'm arguing the letter of the ordinance. And whether they've met the burden, you are going to get charged with more of these, I see it happening. If we have an ordinance that's designed to cap alcohol sales of classy liquor in the city and control it, and we keep continuing to give variances for no reason, we are not living up to the letter of the ordinance. It's tough, it's tough. It's tough when you have people that are trying to make a living and are presenting themselves as nice people, that's hard. But the ordinance is there for a reason, it's for the betterment of the community as a whole. If you grant it, the site has that conditional use, these people can move on in two months. It could go back to the people that had it before, or even a worse actor. And then we have all the problems of trying to rescind that and drag it back and have the adverse impacts to the neighborhood. I think we have to follow the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Yep, this is kind of unusual the way this goes. You had a question for Sue Ann? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, there was some discussion that the church across the street started operating after they did, or, you know, and while, I'm not interested in who was where first, I want to know where that church is. Can you show me on the aerial photo what church we're talking about?
I think Bert can show us on the aerial.
Okay, alright, for those. Okay, well, Fort Des Moines, we approved a sign for their church two years ago, an electronic sign. There's been a church here for years.
I'm not sure that that church was in there after, after they were. I don't think they were.
No, I don't...
Regardless of that, you're going to come up with these where businesses around have changed. And we're stuck with the spot and time that we're at.
Right, and again, that's why I'm not hung up on who was the chronology of who was where first. But I just want to establish, I don't think a church just popped up in recent history, there's been one there a very long time. Another related question to this, and again, you're always very good about getting right to the facts, that's your job. If on any business, for any reason, we wanted to look at some kind of variance, let's say it's not even a liquor store, and we were looking at a business that looked rundown, can we put conditions on them? Well, we want you to fix your awnings, we want to fix your canopy. I mean, how do we get into that, or what kind of Twilight Zone does that put you in?
Well, it puts me in, if you put that in the order, directing the landlord, who did sign off on the application, to bring this before the board, I would have to go to the landlord and say, you need to fix it, or the conditional use won't be granted, and the tenant could be moved out. And therefore, I wouldn't have to do anything because it's tied to the conditional use permits. So, does it work? I don't know. I mean...
But, as a, but it could be allowable, unless Mike has anything he wants to add. If I said, well, I want old shrubs out there, and I want new awnings, and you can't have any signs except for maybe, you know, a couple of lighted signs in the window, and that's it, in order to get what you want. We could theoretically make deals like that.
Theoretically, you could do that. If the property owner wished to object to that, they can go to district court and object that the board operated outside of its jurisdiction.
Okay, and one more question for you. We had a previous owner in there, they kind of knew that this drop dead date was coming up because we had denied their request for the conditional use permit, correct?
I believe that's the same...
It is the same.
It's the same person.
Okay, it is the same person, okay. So, kind of this inevitable, you know, the clock is going to chime here, they kind of knew that?
Yes.
Okay, and that was explained some time ago, that ultimately we'd arrive at this kind of date. But they moved, and this was even before they took over? You sat down with them to talk about this, or...
I don't know if they came in for pre-application, or in reviewing the ordinance, came to the conclusion they weren't going to meet the sixty-forty, and over a year ago came in. At that point, there was the name confusion, and it wasn't, it was a question of the operation at that point, too.
Because I wouldn't sign a ten-year lease on a property unless I knew lock, stock, and barrel that I could do what I want at that property. So, that's a little bit of concern I have, not with you or your approach, but that they should have coming into this. Alright, thank you.
I have a question for Sue. As you're aware, we are dealing with a relatively new ordinance. And as you're also aware, the idea that we even look at these issues was a choice made by the city council to relieve them of the responsibility of these kinds of hearings.
That's not correct, actually.
Now, we have heard, you know, their, the applicant for forty-five minutes. And I guess my question to you is, can these neighborhood organizations eliminate liquor stores by opening, oh, a daycare center within a hundred feet of every commercial property? Or establishing a storefront church in or near a commercial property? Thereby, you know, eliminating this from the neighborhood as a kind of a effort to clean up their neighborhood?
You're asking a hypothetical question that is not before us, number one.
But it is.
And, no, it isn't. The case in this case is not based on somebody putting a daycare within five hundred feet in order to stop this classy liquor license. That's not the case in front of us. Now, could somebody hypothetically find all of the areas in town where they need to open up something to block? Possibly, I suppose it's possible. That would take a whole lot...
Then, would you say, if that in fact were the case, that that eliminates this board's authority to grant those kinds of variances?
No. I don't see that that's a discussion that you can have in a case before you as a hypothetical on a case that's not before you. If you had a case in front of you where you're asking that question, where we knew that a daycare had opened within five hundred feet in order to block the liquor license, and that was part of the fact situation, we could be discussing that. It's also not, it's erroneous to say that council put this in the zoning ordinance to dodge the decision and put it on the board of adjustment. That is not what happened, and that's not the case. The city of Des Moines is not, is not able to license liquor licenses, that's a state responsibility. In order to control our land use, we have to put it in the zoning code, which then all appeals come to you. It wasn't a dodge by council to put it onto the board of adjustment. That is the rule of the zoning laws of state of Iowa. That's how we control land use. So, I kind of...
If in fact, we felt that in this particular case, these were the kind of owners that we wouldn't want to encourage in a neighborhood, that they have a business plan that doesn't seem to offend the adjoining people that are in business, why wouldn't we approve them for a liquor license if we only, if we limited it to them alone?
You are dealing with land use issues, not operators of the land. You are dealing with the land use issue. The land has not proven, the owners have not proven that they have no other viable option for the use of this land, except for to have these good operators in there. I believe that's a flaw in the logic of what a variance is. It's to operate with the land, not the operators. Council doesn't want a liquor license issued within five hundred feet of a church. Doesn't matter if... I was going to say something like...
I know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sue Ann. And because this is kind of unusual, we're going to give you three minutes for rebuttal because this was more of an additional information, so, rather than a request, so, yeah, yeah. And if you can keep it down to three minutes, this is...
Appreciate it. I just point out, obviously, the fact that people have to come in front of this board, that the idea is that you have some discretion and look at the individual circumstances that are in front of you. Late last year, for example, you did approve a conditional use permit on a property that was at eighty feet of a church and three hundred and eighty feet of a daycare center. You know, again, I think, and again, since this is a new ordinance, and everyone's probably struggling on how all this is going to be implemented, I would encourage you to be inventive, and when people come up here and, and, but my client that wants to operate this business, that you try and work with them and put additional restrictions you've never thought of before. There was an issue with people getting these licenses and then renting the building to other people and being bad actors. To tie that conditional use permit down to the tenant in the property, be inventive with it. But again, I think these are the type of people you want. If you're going to have liquor stores at all, or convenience centers where over sixty percent of your revenue is coming from alcohol and tobacco, these are the type of people you want to have running them. And please, I just beg you to use your discretion in this case. Thank you very much for your time.
Mel?
Mr. Chair, can we ask staff a technical question?
Yeah, we're allowed to, so...
Okay. In general, could, on something like a conditional use permit for somebody to have more than forty percent of their revenue, or just to be a liquor store, can we make like one-year conditional permits, or...
I think they could be done.
Set a time limit?
Yeah.
Which means then either it's, a lot of times when we do conditional uses, we're kind of saying, hey, it's going to be done after this period, but we've had somewhere, okay, well then they'll come back and we'll see how they're doing, and da-da-da-da.
That's been done on some variances.
Okay, so, again, I'm just talking theoretical here, you know, and again, for, the standard to obtain a variance is a very high one. So, and that's maybe something we can talk about here when we go to board discussion, and I appreciate the staff's comments on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bert. All closed, sorry. We have to follow a few rules around here, okay. Any other last questions for staff? Close the public portion, then go to board decision. And remember, we're voting on two things, part A and part B. So, part A, let's limit the discussion on that, and that's the granting for a liquor permit. Well, I think you're starting to lead off, I can...
The kind of stuff that I see and that I hear are, we've got business uses that don't fit in. A lot of times, they're causing issues of, they generally affect the general welfare of persons residing in or around them. There's complaints about them, it's an incongruent land use. We look at nuisance issues on Army Post, you know, properties falling apart. I don't want to continue that. I don't want to continue that. I'd have no problem with a liquor store if it was well kept up. Now, the flip side is, and this is what we have to remember here, it's not just what we like, or what we think would be a good idea. You know, we've got to stick to the idea that, could something else go in here instead in a reasonable request? Could Cheese Castle Pizza expand? Yeah, it probably could. Could that existing tavern expand? Yeah, it probably could. So, there are other viable uses for this property. You know, I might like the idea of getting everybody to work together on something, but there's ways we have to make our decisions. And I'm really, this is a tough one. You know, I'd love to put all kinds of bells and whistles on it, and conditions, and make it look better than anything in Jordan Creek, and go buy my Crown Royal there. But that doesn't mean that that's how I can make my decision.
Good. The only viable, the only real discussion we should have, because, is whether or not you're going to approve this as a liquor store. And the reason that's the only real discussion is that to allow them the alternative is to prolong the agony. In other words, they've already said, we can't meet a 40% requirement, you know? Are we, was it the attention of the City Council to make all of these little C2 areas practically worthless? And have all of the tax base reduced? I mean, that was the situation we were faced with last time, you know? The property had almost no value as anything else.
Right.
And now, you know, you get the mix. I mean, you know, hard cases make bad law. I understand, you know. But, in a sense, if we can give them a liquor, make them a liquor store for a year, or 18 months, and have them come back and take a look at the police record and that kind of thing, and we just continue to do that. If they want to, you know, if they want to pay their application fees every 18 months, it's okay with me. Or every, you know, every year. But for us to say, oh, you know, we're not going to make you a liquor store, but what we are gonna do is we're gonna allow you to try and meet the new requirement, you know? A loaf of bread costs $6, and the bottle of liquor is free with it, you know? I don't know.
I think I might shop there. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Tom.
Quiet group. Well, the frustrating thing is, I do believe they're probably good entrepreneurs. The thing we're saddled with is, as Sue Ann said, there is the ordinance, and that church is there. And that church can be next door for all that matters. The intent, and it came from the City Council, is that we've had troubles with situations like that in the past. People have died, on this location for one, one on University for another. And their solution is to take this and say, you cannot operate this kind of a business within these parameters. And that's about the only thing I'm looking at. I feel sorry for them. I think they probably will do a great job. But with the way the City Council has this written, and the way that Sue Ann interprets it, I don't, to me, it wouldn't make any difference if it was one year, two years. It's still in violation of the ordinance. And so, I personally, unless I hear something different, I don't see any other way to grant it. And the fact that this has really been operating as kind of a liquor store now. So, they've been really in violation. And that's not a good sign when you're gonna come to us and try to get some relief, but you're already in violation. That's not helping the situation. So, I'm hard pressed to find support for it, at least for Part A. Anybody else?
I would just add, in the past, we've talked about functional obsolescence of particular parcels or buildings. I don't believe that that's applicable in this case. It's standard distance from the roadway. The depth of the building makes sense. So, I don't think, I don't think to Sue Ann's point, they've proven there's no other economic viable position they could be in in this particular building.
To piggyback off what Jake mentioned there, and I appreciate Tom's comments about, in the discussion with, you know, the ordinance and City Council, a lot of this goes back to what the legislature did to us. But even if this was about having a car detailing shop or something that wasn't allowable in that zoning district, it comes back to what the threshold is to grant a variance. Is there any other reasonable economic use? Or is there an economic hardship here? And we have had cases where they really couldn't do anything with the property, aside from, you know, that kind of use. And again, you know, we've got a bay here, we could have something else in it. We've got plenty of empty bays on Army Post, and I don't like that. But that's not the discussion here at this time. I'd hate to see something go, but at the same time, we've got to make our decisions based on the parameters we have and the justification we've got to have in the law. Works both ways, so, you know. So, I'd like to support them as people, but I don't know if I can support it in the practice I see here.
Mel, from being down in your area, you want to make a motion, then?
Well, I don't like to be the hatchet man, but I think I'll go ahead and put a motion out there to denial the appeal presented in Part A.
And to get this thing going, I'll second that.
Okay.
Moved in seconds, there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to one. Let's move to Part B, then.
How did Tom reference that? We might just drag out the agony here.
When you're gonna cut a tail off a dog, do you do it an inch at a time?
Yes, yeah.
I would offer a counterpoint to that, though.
Okay.
If they have an existing lease in place.
Yes.
And the council's goal is to reduce, over time, the number of licenses. There is some economic benefit, I would assume, to an extension of an existing condition without being able to have it conveyed to a future operator. I agree with Sue Ann's comments that it goes with the property, and that's a flaw in how we review these. But with a year renewal, and I would pose the question to the applicant or their counsel, does the year give them anything?
Well, this one's ongoing, though, isn't it? Part B, Sue? It's not limited to a year. And then the license, I think, is a year, but.
Oh, so we can't control Part B?
We can. But I think that's just a continuation of business as usual as it's being run, or should be run.
I agree with Tom. You don't cut it off an inch at a time unless they say, okay.
Yeah.
This would just be to get them down to the 60-40 that they're supposed to be.
And it's ongoing, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And they can still operate under their existing permit till when?
The end of this year.
End of this year, okay.
So, we're, or until an audit is performed.
Till the end of this year.
Okay, okay.
Unless we grant Part B, and they continue on.
So, Part B is just, yeah, granting a conditional use. Yeah.
Yeah, they have to have Part B.
They have to have Part B.
To do anything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which would bring them into compliance with the intent of the, to be more of a food than, than alcohol.
Right. Is a limited food sales establishment a variance as well?
If it's been and exists, if they've had a valid liquor license since July of 2012, then they're not subject to the separation requirement.
Okay.
So, when we have.
So, it'd be more of an exception? Okay, so then, therefore, that threshold is not as difficult? Okay.
And to me, that makes a lot more sense. I mean, they're good people, and I think they can manage it to that level. I mean, we're not taking the business away. Just have to throttle down the alcohol sales.
And then they'll have to decide.
Yeah.
Where they're gonna go from there.
So, I'll even make the motion. We accept staff recommendation for Part B with the five conditions listed there.
I'll second.
Then moved in second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Thank you. Item eight was carried over from the February meeting. It's been carried over twice, anyway, hasn't it, Bert?
Yeah, it has.
It's a special permit at 1521 East 22nd Street.
Let's see, where are we at here?
Item number 12, or I'm sorry. Item number eight is a request for a special permit for a home occupation. And it would allow retention of a home office for a bail bonds business that's operating within a 10-foot-by-10-foot office within the house. The subject property is located on East 22nd Street, just to the east of the freeway and just north of Easton Boulevard. They've been operating as a bail bondsman business, a bail bonds business. According to the affidavit that they've submitted and I've passed around copies to all of you, they indicate that all official business is conducted at the Polk County Jail, that their customers are not actually coming to this site. So, their argument is that the impacts of this business are really no more than any other home office we have throughout the city. Here's a photo of the house. You can see there's not any signage associated with the business. It's just operating within the house. Here's another side view of the house. And then, the consent map. We had several cards come back in opposition. Staff doesn't feel comfortable granting a special permit for an office for a bail bonds business. This is the license, or the office, or the address where the premises is licensed with, or licensed for. So, if you do a Google search for a bail bonds business, this comes up, and it lists this address here. So, there is the opportunity for people in need of a bail bondsman to do a search on the internet, to find this address, go to this property. So, we don't feel that it's reasonable to subject the surrounding residential area to any associated risks that may come with that. So, we've recommended denial of the special permit for the home occupation. We feel that it'd be better served finding a, running a small office somewhere in a commercial district where it's allowed by rights. Any questions?
How did this come before?
That's a good question. I don't know if it was a complaint.
It says notice of violation.
Okay, so, but I don't know if the inspector was tipped off by somebody, or if they came voluntarily. You might be able to ask the applicant.
And Bert, when you mentioned a quick search showed, you know, area bail bonds at this address, and this is an internet search, you just type it in?
Yeah, just.
Have you seen any advertising that associates the business name with the address?
I have.
Okay, all right. Okay.
It wasn't clear whether they were gonna be servicing everybody at the jail, or, you know, okay.
In our staff report, we say that. And he submitted this affidavit here that states all official business would be conducted at the Polk County Jail, and not at this premise.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess I do have one. Home occupation has to be run by the owner of the property. She says her son runs it.
In this affidavit.
Does familial?
Talks about that she's a part-owner, and her son is a part-owner as well that also lives there.
Okay, so from your perspective, that part is okay?
Yeah. Originally, when it was on the agenda, we had a variance of the provision that it, of that provision. But they've since indicated they don't need that variance.
Okay, thank you.
But, doesn't it say that they'll have some employees? No more than two non-residential individuals will be employed in the business. So, now we've got three people that we know of are working out of this house.
Possibly, because the, yeah, you're right. The special permit criteria say you can have up to two non-residents. Well, Doris and Chad are both residents and operators. So, with those two, plus the two non-residents, you could have up to four employees.
But first, I don't know why you'd need employees if you don't do any business there.
Right.
We'll ask.
Have you looked on the Secretary of State's site? Does it say, when did this business come about?
I didn't look into that, sorry.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represented the applicant?
Hi, I'm Attorney Brian Dels. I'm here for the applicant. My address is 300 Walnut Street, Suite 125, Des Moines.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna break down the staff's rationale by about six points, if you want to follow through me. One being that they have no problems with the administrative activities of this business at this house. Two, whether all the clients would be served at the remote location. Three, that they'd be dealing with convicted criminals. Four, where are the bond services customarily located? Five, an absentee owner. And six, the silent partner. Now, before we address these, I want to tell you about Mr. Ari's business. It's a father-son that run it. Mother owns part of it, too. Mother is gradually retired. She's a snowbird. She goes down to Texas for four months out of the year. Mom runs the books. What we meant by silent partner is that, you know, she doesn't go out to the jail and provide any service. Now, to go through with this, number two, remote location. All business is done at the jail. Not one single client comes to this residence, zero. Mr. Ari does not advertise. The only advertisement you'll see for him is a phone number on the court-appointed list at the jail by the phone when an individual gets arrested. So, that addresses number three, convicted criminals. Obviously, if a guy's sitting in jail, folks, he's not running down to the local bondsman to ask for a bond. He calls from there. Mr. Ari, one of his family members, or his one employee, goes out and sees if the guy can get bonded out or not. Four, this is the only bond service in the State of Iowa that I've been able to find that does this remote access service. Not one other bonding service does this. Five, the absentee owner. I can explain the fact that the mom is a snowbird down in Texas. She does have a vested interest in this property. It's grandma, son, and grandson who live at the house. Those are the three employees. They have one other employee who doesn't work out of the house. When he's on call, he has the phones forwarded to his cell phone, and he goes out to the jail as needed. The only time he's actually at the residence is he stops by a couple times a week The only time he's actually at the residence is he stops by a couple times a week to drop Chad, Mr. Aerie, off the bonds that he might have written that week. And I believe I addressed the silent partner. In sum, guys, if you look at the house here, this window right here entails the entire business. There's a desk, a computer, a printer, and a phone. That's it. The rest of the enclosed porch, and I've been in it, is Mr. Aerie's fishing and golfing equipment. There is zero traffic there. It's just an administrative functioning out there. The only reason why he actually has a residence, or has to have a listed residence, is he needs a landline. And the landline for his business comes into his house, and then it's forwarded on the cellphones of whomever is on duty. Other than that, the Secretary of State requires a physical residence in order to be incorporated. You can't incorporate with the P.O. box. And that's the nature of Mr. Aerie's business. If you have any questions, I entertain them, or Mr. Aerie can himself.
The only thing I've got is, it sounds like it's been prepared, but why was it operating in violation all this time?
Here's what happened on this, guys. Another bondsman and Mr. Aerie had words. The other bondsman turned Mr. Aerie in for operating a out-of-home business that isn't, like, within the exception of a doctor or lawyer. It was not one of the residents around him that complained. It was another bondsman. I do have the individual's name, but I don't think we need to state that on the record.
No, but, so then, but we do know then, you were working in violation of zoning ordinance, then?
He was not aware of the ordinance at the time. I know, lack of ignorance of a statute, you know, is not, you know, Mr. Aerie's business is like dogged bounty hunter, where there's guys running around his house and neighborhood armored up. It's a father, son, grandma, and one guy is what it is.
Brian, on that note, you know, perhaps he didn't know, or what have you, but this two-part question.
Sure.
How long has Aerie Bail Bonds been in business as a corporation? And how long has it operated at this site?
At this site, Mr. Aerie has been in business since '08. Since 2008, there's never been a complaint.
Okay.
Never been a problem. Mr. Aerie just incorporated last month.
Okay.
He just incorporated as an LLC.
Okay, so he's operated the business for the last roughly four-plus years here?
Yes.
It's not like he's been in it for 20 years and was previously operating somewhere else?
Nope. He started here. Mr. Aerie was a carpenter, and he just started the business. And as you can see, there's absolutely nothing-
Sure.
-in this house that's welcoming a business inviting.
Sure, sure. Okay, so he basically started the bond business at the house?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But did you say that he was in business with somebody else previously?
No.
He had words with a competing bail bondsman.
A competing bondsman turned him in for running his business out of his house.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, any last questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion, then go to Board of City.
Well, it might be just a silent business. I still can't support it. The neighbors are not for it. We've got cards from neighbors. I don't think it sends a good message to our neighbors. If I were going to buy a house next door, and I knew that it was a bail bonds business, I probably would say, no, I'm not interested in, in living there, because even though today there may not be any, you know, when I need my mail bondsman, I want him to, I want to be able to go find him. And just knowing that it's out there on Google, that address is still there, it still makes people say, wow, we have a bail bonds business right here in a residential neighborhood. I just don't think it's an appropriate place. I'm sorry, but I just, I just don't think that it should be allowed. And like the cards say, they, you know, you don't know who's going to be driving by. I cannot support it, and I hope, I hope I have support from the board.
Well, I think this is a perfect example of why we've divided the city into commercial areas and residential areas. There are some things that you don't want in a residential area. I know that probably he hasn't had anybody out to the house, but I also know that if there's a default on a bond, that he's going to probably be armed and after the guy that's in default. I just, there is enough cheap commercial property in the city of Des Moines that he could operate from. For example, Army Post Road.
I was waiting for that.
I understand perfectly that he needs a landline.
Not Hooverdale?
And the reason he needs a landline is because you have to have a search warrant in order to listen in on landlines, whereas you don't need a search warrant on cellphones. So if you want to have a confidential conversation, you have to have a landline. I can't support it.
There's, there's one important thing here, as well, with the discussion we've had, and Brian gave a nice presentation on behalf of his client, but he mentioned something that is very crucial here. To have a bail bond company, you have to register a physical address. Well, once you tie those two together now, we've got an association there for all time. Let's, let's say that somebody's charged with something, they see the list of Aerie Bail Bonds down there, yeah, they call him, he comes down, they do it all down there, that's fine, he bails out, turns out he wasn't guilty. Next time he's charged with a crime, then he's going to go, what was that? What was that, Aerie something? Look it up on the Internet. That name's going to come up with that address, and then they'll go, oh, that must be where his office is, and then we got somebody driving out there. When we've got a physical address associated with this business, that's what makes me nervous. And, and I would agree with what Tom and Linda had mentioned on this. And even if you don't rent a real storefront, you could come up with a physical address with shared office. The secretary just sorts the mail separately, and the fax machine runs in the corner. Pretty cheap. I just, yeah, I, there are just some things that you don't want to know are next door to you and are detrimental to the neighborhood just by their existence.
So Linda?
I would make a motion to deny the request for a special permit.
Second. They moved in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed, and those abstaining.
I didn't hear it.
So you can abstain, okay. Motion carries five to zero to one. One abstention, Bert, you get that? Okay. Item nine is an exception at 1327 24th Street.
Chair, members of the board, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. Aerial identified in the subject property on 24th Street, Forest Avenue to the north, Carpenter Avenue south, the Drake Campus to the west. See, it's kind of in the center of the block. This property was built as a single-family dwelling. It's some time ago, it'd been chopped up into three units. It's set vacant long enough, there's losses grandfathering rights to those three units as far as any non-conformities with the site. The zoning district requires a 65-foot wide lot for duplex, which is what the applicant's proposing to convert the building to. It's a 53-foot roughly wide lot. Unfortunately, with our lack of the window covering, you can't see the aerial very good. It's closed up, but before I flip to the pictures, I did want to show this. The applicant also owns the property to the north, and there's a shared drive that starts on the subject property and then crosses over in between the two houses or buildings. And then they kind of have a gravel, shared kind of parking area in the back. Photograph of the subject property, driveway, between the two. And this property has current rental certificate for three units.
Can somebody clean up your picture there?
The camera doesn't like it. So another photograph pulled further back. In reviewing this application, you know, we looked at, you know, what is the intention of having the lot with, the larger lots for multifamily, and as to provide buffering, adequate off-street parking, adequate open space for the residential uses. And we also took into consideration the efforts that have been done in the Drake neighborhood, the recently adopted Drake neighborhood plan that's talked about focusing multifamily uses on the corridors. And, and there's also been efforts in, in the neighborhood to, you know, either rezone areas. This area is zoned R3, and so some areas weren't rezoned or downzoned R160, but certainly there's also an effort to, when non-conformities expire and you, they don't meet the current standards, to encourage that, that property be converted back to what it was built as originally, which is a single-family. With all that into consideration, we are recommending denial. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jason, there was a lot of off-street, or on-street parking in that picture. Where is all that traffic coming from, do you know? I mean, is that-
There, it doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't show up very well in this aerial, but there, one, you have a large parking area with the Drake Campus, so you have people coming to Drake Campus, but this area is heavily populated with houses that have been chopped up into multifamily buildings, and then there are some as-built. You can kind of see the, the larger structures here within that neighborhood, so there's just a high concentration of people living in this small area.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Jason. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Yes, good afternoon. Mark Crittelli, attorney for AJD Properties, as well as the applicant. I believe the applicant's name is on there as well. The property is currently sold, subject to rezoning with a duplex in mind, that's what it is. So it would appear to be the same property, but go from a threeplex to a duplex for the use. The applicant, the purchaser, does have a history of, of remodeling and things like that. It's a construction company. And we would simply ask that the zoning be for a duplex instead of a threeplex.
Well, Mr. Crittelli, would you be aware of the property uses to the north and directly north and directly south of the property? Are they multifamily?
I'm sorry, I'm not. I do know the area fairly well, and I believe it's a, I think it would be a classified, I think Steph said it, it's, it's a C3 area.
Right.
And I believe that the area is, is a lot of what I would call multifamily. I honestly can't tell you if there's a lot of single families. I do know there's a lot of, and, which again, I know that the purchaser wanted, wanted a threeplex, and, and, you know, we decided, no, we think, but, but I don't think it's going to work, work as a single family. I don't believe it because of, of the number of the conversions in it, but again, I think it would work very well as a duplex. And that is, again, what the, what the current purchase agreement is, and-
Okay.
-the property is vacant as we set right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
My name is Carmen Hawking, and I, this is the buyer that Mr. Crittelli was mentioning. Mr. Sosero does not speak too much English. I feel, feel comfortable to speak, so I'm going to talk for him, okay?
It'll be fine.
All right, thank you. We, Mr. Sosero owns a company, a construction company. In the past, he's been buying properties that, you know, fix himself, his company and his wife, and resell the, the properties. The quality of his work is, I mean, is amazing. When you go in these houses, you never think that the houses have been older homes. They do top-of-the-line work, and he takes a lot of pride for that. The houses, they sell extremely fast, and, you know, consequence of the work that he does do. He is planning for the last, probably, two years, two, two or three years to buy properties and, you know, as investment, duplexes, triplex, fourplex. And when he found out this property, he was really excited to buy it and convert it in three units. Actually, when we went to see the property and he saw themselves, because I told him that it was three properties, three apartments, I'm sorry, he said, no, I will not work with this one for three. I think it will be not really good for the tenants to live in a small space, because actually, the first floor, second floor, and the third floor, it was the third unit. He said that probably a duplex. So we have a, a meeting with the city people, probably three, four weeks ago, and they were explaining to, to us how, you know, can be converted in a duplex. Actually, he got more excited about the comments and everything of, of the, this gentleman. So we asked him to see, you can give him the opportunity to remodel this place, to make pride, pride of the neighborhood. I mean, you can see in that area, some of the houses, you know, they're not even a single family. They need some work, or something that makes the, the, the city or the people close to Drake to feel more comfortable to walk around the streets. And that's what he's planning to do. He wants to fix this place, make it a nice duplex, and he will, of course, be sure that the tenants, they will take care of his property, if you give him an opportunity. So I think it's, we need more people like him to come and fix these houses, because some of them, you know, they are so large. I was thinking, if somebody converts these houses in a single family, who is going to be able to afford, I mean, American bills? I mean, and now that we have somebody to take care of this one in particular, we will asking you to give him the opportunity to do so.
Okay.
Okay?
What, what type of people you planning on running these to? Just normal residents or Drake students, or?
Well, because the, the work that he does, students, it will be probably one student sometimes, you know, because they're students, they cannot afford a nice place. It will be probably a kind of family, family people, I mean, and of course, he will, you know, try to select the tenants, be sure that they are responsible, that they take, they will take care of the property. He will probably do that. But as, as in a student, sometimes you have to get two students, and we know when you're young sometimes.
I got a couple kids myself.
Could you explain the parking situation on the premises and how you would reach it? Are you going to reach it from the front of the property, from the street, or do you reach it from the rear, from an alley?
Excuse me, Mr. Clark, board. The, there's actually, the staff is, is correct, actually, there's, there's access from the, there's an alley in the back that goes-
Can we put that picture back up? Thanks, Jason.
There's an alley in the back that goes the whole length-
Mr. Crittelli, can you point?
Well, there's an alley that goes to the rear, which would be toward the east, which has access, and then, and then, of course, there's access off the street front, which I believe is, is it 24? Is it? Okay, yeah. And then there's a max ass off of, off of 24th Street. And, and, and yes, it's a shared driveway, and there's parking-
Right.
-behind both, both dwellings.
Jason, is that red line there, the, the lot line?
Yeah, so here's the alley, partially. You can see it showing up there. Zoomed in pretty tight, so you can see the-
Sure.
-kind of makeshift parking area.
The alley is open?
Yes.
Okay, and as, if you'll just leave the previous one up there, please, Jason. As you look at this joint driveway from the street, is there a written easement agreement that entitles the owner of this proposed duplex some rights to utilize the driveway?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. And you've, you've done some real property work in the past, have you not?
Yes, I have, sir.
Do you think that this is, do you think that the status of the easement for the rear area to allow the cars to travel, traverse the area and to park back there is adequate for mortgage loan purposes?
Yes, I do. The, the transaction that we have here is, is not a mortgage loan transaction, though it is a cash transaction.
I understand, but at a certain point, he's-
Yes.
-he's got to have some money to renovate the premises.
Yes, yes, that's true. I would also state that I, I have had a lot of personal experience with Ms. Hawking, who serves the Latino community and does a marvelous job. And, and I know she has worked with many folks that have been here that have language bearers and just does a marvelous job, and she, she assists folks in obtaining housing, and we've never had any issues whatsoever when she helps with transactions.
Well, question for Ms. Hawking, you might be able to answer this on behalf of Mr. Sosero, but when you started your presentation, it sounded like he buys, Mr. Sosero buys houses, remodels them, fixes them up, and sells them. But what it also sounds like, he is a landlord as well. He does rent his property to renters sometimes, his other properties?
Yeah, well, no, this one will be the first one.
This will be the first one?
Yeah, the first property that he rents.
Are you sure you want to do that, Mr. Sosero? Are you sure you want to do that, Mr. Sosero? And I kind of mean that in all sincerity. It's one thing to invest in a property to kind of what I would call flip it. You fix it up and you flip it. But being a landlord brings up a whole other set of issues, but Mr. Cattelli could perhaps talk to you about that a little bit, too. So I just, it's very important for me to understand that if we would approve this, that you are going to be a landlord as well in this process. You're not just going to sell it a month after you fix it up.
No, he is going to keep it, him and his wife, they will keep it. And I want to make a point, the way, when I met the Salsedos is because they were renting from me. So he knows how it is to be a tenant.
Okay.
And probably, you know, since our relationship has been through for years, he knows how to be a landlord, because we always talk about that.
Okay.
I think they're going to be really, really good, because they are really guy, they are really hard workers. His wife, she just stepped out of the bathroom, I think she got lost. But when they buy these houses, actually, she is the one decides the colors, she paint the counters, because they put everything new. She does do a lot of work with him. Not even he owns the company, and, you know, they have employees. She likes to do some women's touch. And their dream, like I said, for a few years, we were talking about to buy an investment property that they will keep and they management. She's the one runs the company, she stays home. But since they don't have any houses now that they bought since last year, that's what she's going to be, she's going to be the one in charge to taking care of the investment property.
Okay.
But didn't you say that they own the house next door, and it has current rental certificates?
The...
I thought you said they were both jointly owned by the same person.
At one point, they were, and no, and now they're not. But this is Sarah.
That's what Jason said.
The sensor shows them as being owned by the same.
But they're not now. They're not. And I can't speak why that is, at one point, they were. At one point, I own both. I do not own the other one, and I don't know why it wouldn't be a change that. I can't address that. I don't know that.
So these were both owned by you?
Yes, yes, at one time.
And they were multifamily when you owned them?
Yes.
Okay. And how about that one to the south again? Any idea how that was used?
I believe it's a multifamily with a current, oh, to the south? I do not know what the use on it is, no. I do not know. I believe, I think everything in this area is probably single, excuse me, probably a multi, I think.
I know the one on the southwest corner is, because we had that about four months ago, so.
Right.
It sounds like there's still legal not informing multiple family residences in this area.
I think that's true, yes.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Bob Guevar, I'm president of the Carpenter Neighborhood Association, and this property is in our neighborhood. And we feel that since the zoning designation for the property has lapsed, that the building should revert to a single-family house. At the present time on this block, there's only one single-family house. All the other ones are either a 12-unit apartment building or houses that have been divided into various apartments. This house is really not that big a house compared to a lot of the houses in our neighborhood. We are particularly concerned about this, the zoning changes in this block, because there's been an uptick in crime on this block. And since it's right across the campus, it's also of concern to Drake. We've had robberies, assaults, domestic abuse, drug and alcohol-related problems. And so most of these, I feel, are because there has been poor tenant screening on the part of the landlords on that block. And we know that, although, in fact, we didn't know that Mr. Cattelli was still involved with this property, but that was one of the problems we had with his properties in our neighborhood before, that there was not good screening of the tenants who rented these apartments. And I also know that the Drake and Drake Park neighborhoods are also opposed to this proposal. I presume since they're not here, they probably sent written statements to you?
We haven't received any.
I do have an email from Derek Gould stating his clear opposition to it. If anybody would like to see...
You want us to pick it under the thing, and then we'll pass it around?
Put it right on top of that other picture there. We can see it then up on the screen.
Hold it up.
Yeah.
And we'll have to either keep that or make a copy of it before he leaves. Bill and I are opposed. What does that mean?
Bill Capuccio, the president of the Drake Park Neighborhood, and I is Derek Gould.
But is that an official statement from a neighborhood association, or is that what Bill thinks?
That email is from Derek.
Okay. I think it's very important to make sure that they're speaking as...
Neighborhood group.
As a neighborhood group. I know Bill Capuccio personally, I work with him. So I know he's a good guy, and I know his intent, but it's important, I think, when we're going to look at evidence or smittles here, that if neighborhoods want to speak, they need to do it as an official, as an official statement, because that tells me they've had discussion with membership and the board, and it's just not the president's opinion.
We have, we don't know anything about Mr. Salsedo, but neither he nor Mr. Cattelli have discussed this proposal with our neighborhood association, nor with the other neighborhood associations. And there is a similar property on 22nd Street, right south of university, that's being bought by Mr. Salsedo with the same purpose, I understand.
Any questions?
I just have a question for the city.
Okay. Thank you. One second, Jason.
Oh, I thought she said she had a question.
Well, because he gets three minutes rebuttal.
Okay.
Unless you want to ask now.
Oh, it's good to me.
Doesn't matter.
Yes, Mr. Cattelli, yeah, you got three minutes rebuttal.
I think one thing, thing I do want to point out, I did speak with the contract or the buyer of the property, and because again, I know that Mr. Penns asked, and I think it's important, I asked him if he would allow to put a restriction in the deed or the contract that he not sell the property for a one-year period, and he said he would do that. And we can certainly make that a covenant and, you know, but again, yeah, I think that's important. So he's agreed to do that, and we can make that a stipulation if that would help the board, so.
I would just, I appreciate that, but I just more wanted to clarify. I just thought he was kind of like, you know, Tim Taylor, the handyman, and he just fixed these things and sell them. And great, fine, have a good time.
All the communication we've had is that he wants to fix this and to keep this, and again, I had the specific conversation, and he said...
He does want to rent it, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great, thanks.
Well, if you can keep it to one minute, he didn't use...
I just want to say that...
I need you up here.
We think that the people in the association of the neighborhood, I'm sure they do a great job, but we're not talking about Mr. Cattelli's keeping the property. Mr. Cattelli is selling the property to somebody else. Whatever Mr. Cattelli has a history of the tenants, doesn't have to do anything with, you know, the new people that wants to buy it. This is going to be their retirement, probably, the thing for the kids to, you know, in the future, to go to school. They're hard workers, and I'm sure the association will be so happy to have them as, you know, in the neighborhood. Okay? I just want to say that.
One more question. Does he intend to fix this up and occupy it as an owner-occupied duplex, or is he going to rent both sides?
No, he's going to rent both sides. He owns a home.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any last questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yes. Didn't think you were getting away that easy, did you?
I was hoping, I didn't make eye contact, I was hoping you would.
Don't mean to not ask.
No, please do.
In part of the staff rationale, it talks about the purpose of the zoning ordinance to be in harmony with the essential character of the neighborhood. And that the neighborhood, isn't there a neighborhood plan on file for this area? And I thought they, I thought they were working to bring homes on these, I call them side streets, back to single family. Am I wrong?
No, no, you're correct. I mean, there's the recently adopted Drake neighborhood plan, and if you go back even further, there is both, there's Carpenter, Drake Park neighborhoods, there's subsets of the Drake, and they did, they were one of our early, when City of Des Moines started doing neighborhood planning, they were one of the first ones through the process. So they've, it's been a lot of effort over the years. And when we were looking at this from, you know, character, you know, the way it's plotted, the areas plotted out, the narrowness of the lots, the design of the building, you know, there isn't, other than the shared driveway, there's not, there's no ability to provide a driveway off of the street, you know, to have a typical paved driveway. It's kind of in the middle of the block, so you'd have to rely on the alley if it's going to have its own standalone parking for a duplex or multifamily use. That, all those constraints just make more sense for a single-family use from our perspective. And I believe that that's more compliant or compliant with the intent of the Drake neighborhood plan, which talks about multifamily uses being developed along the major corridors on, where you have, you know, streets that can handle the capacity of the traffic, you have access to multi, or to DART, you have lots that are large enough to handle parking and extra vehicle trips coming in and out of lots versus being mid-block, like you said, and kind of the hard or side street part of the neighborhood.
Because I, I mean, I thought we took those neighborhood plans really serious, that, I mean, that's really what the neighborhood is saying they want to go back to. Are there other homes on this street within this block? Are, how many are single-family and how many are multifamily? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't know. I mean, just my observation is there's a lot of multifamily in this particular block. I mean, you can tell from the aerial, there's buildings that are newer to the neighborhood where a couple houses have been tore down and this small apartment building has been built. You know, I know, I do know that this, you know, this had been a threeplex, this has a rental certificate for a threeplex. I'm, just driving up and down the street, it appeared, you know, that several of the other buildings were multifamily.
Including, including the one at the south end of the street, which we approved as multifamily within the last six months. All right? Same street, right?
I believe it is. Okay. Any last questions for staff, then? Close the public portion, go to board decision, then.
I have trouble thinking that this area is going to turn into single-family homes. I, you know, I think that's a nice thought, that it's by Drake and Drake students need a place to rent, and I just don't see it turning back to a single family.
Cindy, you're on my wavelength here. I see a difference between an area and a neighborhood, and I appreciate the neighborhood representative being here as well, but, you know, this is directly across the street from a commuter parking lot for the university. It's where I always try to park when I go to a game at the nap center. I mean, and Jason mentioned, for all these reasons, such as a shared drive, and it's in the middle of the block, and therefore, it just doesn't work as multifamily. I'm like, wait a minute, that's why it doesn't work for single-family. I don't think I'd want to buy a property and have the shared driveway to hassle over. I'd rather have that be a rental, and eh, it's a landlord's issue to figure out how to keep my driveway clear. I would rather see this be an R2, or a duplex, and kind of bring it down a notch than say, well, let's just make it R1, and, well, we might have an empty house forever, but by golly, it's R1. I'd rather see someone in there fixing this up and reducing the footprint, which they are from what it was, than to just have it sit there and be empty, which I would think would be, if I was a betting person, that that's probably what we would have. And we do have other rental housing around here. This isn't, you know, two blocks away in the center of a neighborhood. This is on that first street, right next to the east end of the campus there. And we got a threeplex right to the north, so if I was a single-family buyer, I don't think I'd want to buy a house next to a threeplex. So I'd like to find a way to make this work.
Other thoughts? You know, Drake is not going down in attendance, it just keeps growing.
Especially with the new basketball coach.
There we go. Got one yet?
No.
You know, I just...
Can't go back.
You know, if you look at the picture now, it's boarded up. And I'll tell you what, that's, if there's anything that would attract crime and issues like that, a boarded-up house is probably one of the best ways to be a magnet for that. I think you're right, Mel. If, you know, if we can tone it down from three to two, we've accomplished a little bit. I'm trying, you know, I've tried every way to try and figure out how we could make this a single-family dwelling, and I just don't see any way it can be done, unless you want to infuse an unreasonable amount of money. And I don't know, Jake, would you throw a ton of money hand over fist to try and, yeah? I just think, I think we, this is probably the best plan for this piece of property. I'd like to see, I'm whollyheartedly agree, I'd love to see the thing be a single-family, but I just...
May, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see it be a usable property, something that's going to be adding something to the base, and hopefully be something that's going to be betterment to the neighborhood. Yes.
I just wanted to offer that if the board would like, you know, is interested in supporting the application, that maybe we look at some things that could make the site function better.
Yes.
Paved parking, those sorts of, you know, stuff that would be expected of a new duplex being constructed.
Well, would that be part of a site plan, or do we have to put, incorporate that in the decision?
I believe if you just granted them the relief that, and let me look at Sue, that they could just reoccupy it as it is today. So if there's anything, any thoughts that you have about how you'd like to improve the site operationally from, as a duplex, you might think about that.
Jason, can you pop the picture back up of the two properties that are owned by Mr. Cattelli?
Or were?
Okay. The subject property is to the right there.
That's correct.
So did Drake let you on their property to take that picture?
I was just...
It's a public parking lot during the day, right? No, I just, I just can easily tell where that was taken.
You know, my thought in looking at this picture is that Mr. Cattelli is going to, you know, benefit from the sale of this property. It would be nice if the existing, the remaining property that he owns could be fixed up along with this property to really improve the neighborhood and improve the area. I think, I think there's a lot of room for improvement for both of these properties.
And I, and that leads to kind of a concern I had in looking at this, is that this is basically somewhat of a gravel driveway.
Yes.
Squeezed in between two, there's a mix of parking. So if you've got two units here and three units here, so you're going to have at least five cars, kind of with no, I mean, it's just a disaster.
It looks disastrous.
But those houses were constructed to share a driveway to the rear of these houses, in which...
Well, these were built, they probably only had alley access.
Why would you think that?
Well, because you wouldn't, because there's a tree.
Right.
Right in the middle where you would put a driveway if you're doing it on purpose. And you look at the era, era of these houses, that's, the alley pattern's very common in this part of Des Moines.
Well, quite probably, you didn't have the side steps there, and...
Jason, does that look like a curb cut right there, though? Right in front of the tree?
Well, here's where the...
No, to the left, to the left.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, see where...
Well, that's part of that one.
I think, yeah, it's, from here to here is the curb cut.
Okay.
You go this way to avoid the tree, and you come back, and then you go in between the buildings.
Okay.
I mean, when this was built, these, you wouldn't, these weren't placed, I mean, these are older homes. You know, I at one time lived in a house that was built in '36 that had, the way the homes were all built on that street.
Sure, sure.
It's like Beverdale, you have the shared drive. But these are an older era home where it was typical, you had the alley access and all your vehicles.
And you had your garages behind there, like that other house to the south.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Well, could, could we theoretically say, hey, we like your idea, and instead of paving this big, long driveway between these two houses and having this silly easement, just take that entire thing out and make them access it through the alleyway, and they can come in and park from the alley unless they want to park on the street?
Mr. Cattelli, I can't have you speak unless we bring you forward.
I'm sorry.
I know.
But there's some misinformation in the record, I've got it corrected.
So here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask you to come up. But you can't just come up here, you know, you'll have to be asked in. Okay, come on up.
I do not own both properties, so...
You can't.
So again, again, I want to make sure that, to Ms. Smith... So again, again, I want to make sure that, 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 to miss Smith, I'm going to understand, yes, so I only own the one now that is, that is, I'm under consideration. I don't, I don't...
Point at the one you own, just, just so we're all clear.
Well, the subject, it's 1327.
That's the only one you own now.
Yes, that's correct.
You own both of them.
Okay. At one time I did own both, I do not own, own both at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, again, we'll close the public portion and go back to board decision.
Do, do we want to make a perfect thing here or do we want to try to get the best we can right now with a limited approach here? I mean, we, because, because we could make the potential buyer start having a legal discussion with the other owner about changing easements or yanking out driveways or paving driveways and I, I understand what Jason's saying and that's usually what I like to do, a little quid pro quo here, but it's in bad shape now. I think it fixes it up, but just that...
I like what the neighborhood group says, you know, they want, they want to get this thing at least straightened out. I, so if you've got a perfect solution, we're going to continue it for a month?
I, depends on what our solution is. If we want paved curbs and stormwater retention and all this in the back, I bet you that, Mr. Cicero will probably go, nope, I think I'll look somewhere else.
Right. I think we need to get the best we can get.
Mm-hmm.
In my mind, you've got a willing buyer here who has had some experience in fixing up properties. The request is to, to allow him to treat this as a duplex. I don't see any reason not to allow him to treat it as a duplex except for one, and that is the neighborhood association's against it. The, you, sure, you could make requirements about concrete and this and that and the other thing, but in a sense, it rents for more money if you don't have to park in the mud.
Sure.
But he knows that.
Right.
You know?
Right.
So, I, I would just allow it to be utilized as a duplex.
If he wanted to somehow keep doing what he's already doing as is, I might say, Aunt, you, you got to give us a little something, but he is going to give something. He's going to improve the property by fixing up the house.
And that's down news.
And keep in mind that this is...
He's downsizing the multifamily.
Right. And it's subject to, to inspection and it's subject to him doing things in compliance with the, with the ordinance and it's tough enough to...
Right.
Cut it into two from three, you know, I mean, you've got to pull a lot of stuff out of there.
And, and by no means is it a model of what we would want to see for, for site planning here, so.
I think we've got a pretty good idea where we're going. Can somebody put a motion out there?
Let's see.
Remember that staff's recommendation is denial, so. What I'd entertain a motion for is to grant an exception of 11.8 feet less than the minimum 65 feet of lot width required for a two-family residential use.
I'll second that.
I'll make it then.
Oh, what, I, I...
Are you moving that?
I thought he was.
Yeah, I'll move it. All right.
I thought he was. Okay, then I'll second that.
Hoping somebody'd pick up on it, but that's all right. We're second.
Sorry, I'll second. Tom's right behind me.
Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, I'm abstaining. Motion carries 501. You got that, Bert? But don't give up, I'd keep talking, that, you brought a lot of good points up.
Mm-hmm.
Let's get one more in. Item 10 is a variance at 2321 Second Avenue.
Just throw them in here, okay? Kind of wake me up here.
Item number 10 is a request for a variance of five feet less than the minimum required, five-foot front yard setback for off-street parking. The subject, the subject property is the Tony Morrow of collision. Senator Idomadius at the corner of Second Avenue and Holcomb Avenue, it's just across from North High School. It is a very well-maintained property, a good example of the one on our corridors. Here's the site, is it, generally appears to say there is an addition here that comes up to the front property line, that the board, this board did grant the variance to allow the addition up here. What they're wanting today is to expand their off-street parking to the south and they're wanting to have it right up to the front property line. This is a unique situation in that the, there is a really wide Second Avenue right-of-way here, so the edge of the pavement or where the property line is would actually be about 30 feet back from the curb along Second Avenue and then 24 feet from the sidewalk. So driving by, you would never know that the parking lot would be right up to the front property line. Here's a photo of the site and the parking would be within this area here. You can see these head-in parking stalls here, there'd just be a continuation of that row for about five or six more spaces with the access drive in front of it. This is from the site, looking at where the stalls would be. Again, the park, the property line's right about here, so you can see it is set back quite a ways from Second Avenue. And then, looking to the north from that drive approach, the existing pavement, pavement is right up to the property line, so you can see the property line is about here. The sign is within the city right-of-way, had, they had to go through special processes to be able to...
I wondered.
Put that sign in the right-of-way.
One more photo.
And then the consent map, we had two cards come back in support and then a letter from the Neighborhood Association in support. From staff's perspective, we did recommend denial, that we felt that there is the opportunity to provide a five-foot setback along Second Avenue, but I know from the applicant's perspective, having it function better with the existing paving stalls, they need the variance to make that driveway work. Like I said, there would be continuing to park stalls along here with the 24-foot wide drive aisle to the south, so. Again, we've recommended denial, we felt that there are other alternatives available, so. Any questions?
Do, do they own the other green space here on what I'm going to call the southeast corner of that lot, that big open area? Okay.
This photo probably shows better where the property is.
Okay, there, okay. Great.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
You probably recognize me by now, I've been here a couple times. My property's kind of chopped up there and with that setback, it is kind of an issue at times. Anyway, what, what we've done is we've improved that property dramatically. Probably most of you have been down Second Avenue.
Go by it every day.
Yeah, with the big estimating bay, glass doors, shined it up, I shine it up every day as much as I possibly can. The deal is that, what's happened is, you guys allowing us to build on and, and do more business, it's worked dramatically. So now we're at a situation where on a daily basis, we don't need that overflow parking, but in our business, we start on Monday and it's, come Hector High Water, we're going to get those cars done by Friday. So Friday, we have a, and then all these cars that we're trying to find places for them until the people can come and pick them up and take them away. During the week, you probably won't even see any cars in that area. It's just, it's just during, you know, the end of the week, Thursday, Friday, Friday especially, it's not uncommon for us to have 15, 20 cars ready to be delivered on a, on a Friday. So we need someone to put these cars. So originally, I just put a little rock area there and I was going to plant some stuff in there and then we, I could always use it as an overflow and also for snow removal, I could put snow back into that area and, and of course, that didn't work out. So they wanted that to be a permanent, a permanent area. So the cars won't be near the street, it isn't like we're going to have a parking lot or a used car lot, I don't, we don't sell any cars, you've never seen a car out there with a for-sale sign on it, we don't do that. The cars will be backed up just like the other cars. We're in this picture right here and it'll just be a continuation along here and it'll come over and come back to, it'll just line up with the existing parking lot, basically. And so the cars will be backed up, they're backed by the building in stalls, I think we're going to gain five or six stalls along that way. That's the intent. We're not really, you know, we're not trying to do, and, and in hope someday, if things keep going the way they are, I wouldn't mind expanding that building out that end a little bit. You know, that's down the road, but we're getting to that point where we're, you know, it's something we're starting to talk about. So, not that that's going to happen in the next two, three years, but there's potential for that. So I really don't want to have to move things back in that area and then have to tear out a bunch of concrete down the road, you know, and like I said, that, that's pretty, that, that particular area isn't used much for, you know, for anything now other than I just have to mow it every week. And I do own all the way, that whole grass strip from, from the chain link fence all the way to the back of that property, there's a whole big area right there, so.
How long have you owned that property, Tony?
I have owned that property since 1993.
That's been a long time.
Yeah, yeah. And every year I try and make it just a little nicer and a little shinier and...
93, before or after the flood?
Just after.
Okay.
Metal Gold or Beatrice Foods owned the property, the flood came, they abandoned ship and I came in and bought it and, and started from, from that point.
And then you had some water in 2010 again?
Eight.
Eight.
But I didn't have any. That's why those palm trees are out there, that's Paradise Island. Yeah.
Now I get your insinuating.
It was water all the way around us, but that was dry. That was the command center for the National Guard, right there in our parking lot. And they could use more if it ever happens again, they need more space. But anyway, that's where I'm at. Like I said, we're just trying to, trying to make things happen there and, and it's working, you know, and it's been through good help through the city and Phil Delfield and his people and, and, you know, telling us what we can do and how we can go about it. And when I started this process, I talked to Phil and I said, what can I, you know, what'll I, what can I do? And he says, well, you know, if you can pave that, just, you know, we're going to have to get a variance for the setback issue, so. And like I said, I don't know what their intent was at one time, but it's like, like Keith said, it was like, it's like 30 feet or something from the street back to that area. There's a huge, there's a huge setback there for some reason, I don't know what their intent was, maybe, you know, back in the day, who knows? But since 93, they haven't needed it, no one has, but I'm the only one using it, so.
Any other questions? No.
Just two quick ones, Tony. Now, you, you mentioned, you know, it comes to Friday, you know, customers are picking up their cars, right? You got the work done.
Right.
So do you anticipate you're going to have like, you know, busted up minivans sitting out there?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so it's either finished cars or, all right.
And anybody that goes by there can tell you, there's never anything that's, I mean, there's a big sign on the, if you came inside, you'd understand that it's a little...
Right, right. And I realize you have to have busted up cars somewhere or you don't have a business, but they're all in the back.
They're in the night, in lock.
And you've...
Where no one has to look at.
You can see as, you know, as much, as much as staff likes what you're doing there, they have recommended denial here.
That surprised me, but...
Right, right.
It surprised me.
If, if we were to look at granting this, could you put that little site plan back up there which you had drawn up that shows your proposed parking lot? Yeah, yeah. Just right there, the way that is, so on the south perimeter there, before you've got your neighbor's lot to the south.
Right.
You still got a little green space there, maybe 10 feet or so. Could you put in a row of six shrubs or maybe three little, three little ornamental trees?
Anything else I've done there? You think I wouldn't put stuff there and, and in front?
Yeah.
You know, it's going to be...
Well, you, you probably won't be able to put it in front toward the street because then it's in the right-of-way.
If you're at a low risk, if the city...
Okay, okay. If, if you, just on your own volition, are saying that you'll probably put some shrubs there at your own risk...
Absolutely.
Into the right-of-way?
Absolutely.
Or maybe throw a few little fun things on the south end? That goes a long way.
Yeah.
For palm trees.
Yeah.
And like I said, I mean, I mean, if you just, if you just drive by and see what I've done and how I keep it and, you know, and I don't, I don't have a yard service, I am the person, I do it all myself, I just, you know, everything has to just be right, you know, and that's all I'm asking is that I have that opportunity.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Thought you'd be here.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I'm Marcia Steele, co-chair of Union Park Neighborhood Association in which Mr. Morrow's business is placed. I went out and took a couple of photographs this morning. We appreciate setback very much in Union Park, we have issues. Probably 25 different used car lots and five feet setback makes a huge difference to us, so keep doing a good job. However, then you have an extreme, this is about five blocks north of Tony's business. I think that those two railroad ties might be about two feet of setback, if you can call it that. And this is across the street, this is at the intersection of Second and New York. This is what exists north of Tony. And so you've seen some of these. This is Tony. Our point as the Neighborhood Association, when we discussed this at our steering committee meeting, was that we think he's a very good neighbor. We've even given, given him a lawn of the week designation, which for us is a big deal. He has a nice front lawn and he keeps it up and we believe that the addition of these six parking spaces to the south, that he's just volunteered to shelter a little bit more with shrubbery, will not detract from the already deep setback on Second Avenue and we'd far prefer Tony to have 10 more businesses than some of those last pictures that we showed. So he's a great neighbor, lawn of the week, palm trees, I agree, Linda, and we think that this particular setback variance is vastly different than a lot of others. So, thank you very much.
Now if you can do something for Eagle Iron Works and get that cleaned up.
They're trying. We, we hear they are trying. Besides, the back is now nicely landscaped, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Well, this is my stomping ground, as it was yours.
I was going to say, don't, don't take total credit yet. I'll give you my story too.
I, I make a motion that we grant the variance at 2321 Second Avenue tomorrow.
And I'll second, yes, that is my old stomping ground and, and I'll tell you what, I drive past your place every day and I want to tell you, it's always a shining island out there, you know. Marcia already pointed out, you know, what you got north of you and I, I love the, you know, you drive past it so many times and it always looks so good, I don't even know if, if you throw 40 more cars out there, I don't think I'd notice the difference. Just keep up the great work you're doing, I like what I see, so...
But don't you miss Elsie the Cow? Remember the Borden Dairy sign that was right?
Borden was across the street though, wasn't it, where the...
Well, that was, that was actually a 10,000-foot ice cream for each...
Yeah.
But they had the big Borden's.
You're both right.
Yep. See, I...
What year was that?
Oh, it's back in the 50s.
Enough for Valdi, we moved in second and any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Keep up the good work, Tony. Keep up the good work, Tony. You bet. Why don't we take about a five-minute break, folks? We'll be back here at 3:35. Bert, you got one change that you missed on the first floor round?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in. Number fourteen is a request for a variance to allow a truck with signage to park in the front yard setback. We've recommended an amended appeal which would allow them to park in the front yard setback along East Seneca but not East Fourteenth Street. The applicant's in agreement with our staff recommendation, so if the board was comfortable, we could move that one. Approve it right now as a consent item.
We have the applicant up here, just...
Wouldn't have to sit there.
You know, since you filed and paid your money, you get to say your name and address.
And he's sat here long enough.
Jason Mickel, my residence 115 Calder Circle, and representing Best Heating and Cooling.
And you're in agreement with staff recommendations?
Full, full agreement.
Okay. So, since we could have voted on this on the consent agenda, move staff recommendation on item four K.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. You got the express route today here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Kind of.
Going back in line here. Item eleven is a variance at 2012, 2002 Woodland. And before you go, Jason, folks, I just want to let you know that we lost one member, had to leave early, so we're down to five members. So, you need four out of the five to get your vote. If you feel that, that your appeal's shaky and you might want to let it go for a month, let us know and we'll do that, but we're going to continue on unless we hear something different.
And we are nice people overall.
That's right.
Your place are adequate, too big and too many banners.
Are we ready, Bill? Do you want me to...
Go ahead, yep. I'm sorry, thanks.
That's okay, I just, Jason Van Essen with the staff. This is the aerial showing the subject property on the southeast corner of Woodland Avenue and MLK and at the edge of the Sherman Hill neighborhood.
And MLK.
Photograph looking to the south and to the west along Woodland Avenue. See the parking and then the building in the background. This is looking at the main entrance to the building with MLK off to the side, looking The, the application, the request before you is two variances. One, to allow a, a sign type that's not allowed, which is a banner sign, and then also to allow the applicant to exceed the minimum number of, or excuse me, maximum number of freestanding signs, which would be two for this property. So that there would be exceeding that by a seven, so it's eight, up to eight banner signs. These are photographed, photoshopped examples of what they're proposing to be placed on parking lot light, light poles, excuse me. Cards are being passed around. This is response map. In reviewing this application, we really just looked back to the variance criteria and then the intent of the zoning ordinance. The, the applicant, this is a great operation, a great asset to the community. The proposed banner signs are aesthetically well-done, but where we had problems with is the, kind of the intent of having sign regulations and limiting the number of signs for uses and kind of providing that balance throughout the city of adequate signage but not over signage. And so that's the perspective we came from when we prepared our staff report as, as a recommendation or denial. Happy answering any questions.
Where are these signs going to be?
Throughout the parking lot on the poles. This is a photograph.
But are they interior to the parking lot or are they sitting along the street or what are they doing?
Um, predominantly interior. You can kind of see it show up, and I, maybe the applicant will do a better job of describing. There's one that's fairly close to the street, but some of them are further back in, but that's a good question.
I mean, I don't care what they do inside their parking lot, but if you're going to, as, as one of the objectors said, you know, why do we want these along the street?
Yeah, well, I think they're probably speaking of the fact that the parking lot fronts Woodland Avenue, maybe, is what their thoughts are.
Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, I'm Chris Diebel. I'm a public affairs consultant with LPCA, and I represent Orchestrade Hospitality and Gateway Market. Home address is 119 Fourth Street downtown Des Moines. From our perspective, we are, in answer to your question, Mr. Clark, they are internal to our parking lot. Some of them get a little closer to Woodland than others, but you can see that there's little islands, for lack of a better term, in our parking lot. What our goal here with these is, is to grow the catering side of our business with increased competition in the grocery market, specifically the grocery, the gourmet grocery market and cafe business that we've, we've had recently in our metro area, out in the suburbs. We, we really feel that growing catering is going to be integral to keeping this business alive and thriving. From our perspective, these signs are no different than the banner signs that you can see right out this window that are throughout downtown on major roads, whereas ours would just be within our own parking lot. So, very similar to what Meredith puts out and any number of nonprofits and events throughout the year, throughout all of downtown.
Chris, can you, can you show me, show us where, where the banners would be in that parking lot? I'm having trouble figuring out where they would actually be in relationship to the road.
Sure, and I don't know if, this gets a little foggy here, but none of these would be along the perimeter, say along MLK or directly along Woodland. These are in little bump-out nooks. You can see the image of this car here shows you how far setback they are from the street, and then you can sort of see down there these other little lights here, and then there's some down the other side there.
Can you put the previous picture up that was there, just, and just...
You mean this?
No, before that.
Got a little sight plan at the end of the map.
Yeah, I mean, like, where would it be?
Take a, take a pencil and point to, to each little light.
So, you can see, here would be an example, here would be an example, here, along here, there. None of these are proposed for here or along the street here.
Okay.
So we're trying to keep those within our parking lot.
The closest one to the street would be like where the driveway is, but even then they're going to be in toward the inside of the parking lot.
Right, and, and that's where I was kind of pointing out. This would be an example of that because you can see where it sits from behind there and behind there. From our perspective, we're looking at attracting existing customers who are grocery or cafe customers of Gateway Market but may not utilize catering services. It's a, it's part of a broader campaign. We are doing some, some traditional marketing, but as you can imagine, it's a lot more cost-effective for us to do that on our property. So this would complement what we're doing in existing in-store marketing and bag inserts and some limited catering ads that we're doing in, in some of the select publications.
Could you describe the signs? Are they made out of metal? Are they made out of vellum or, you know?
The frames that hold them are made out of metal rods, and then there's an all-weather material, cloth material, that hangs from those through pockets at the top and the bottom.
Okay. Are these intended to be the same sign all year round, or do you plan on refreshing it with a different sign, say, every six months or...
You know, that would be something, if, if we did it, what we're hoping to do is keep in concert with this creative package, so if the message were to change seasonally, it might say, "We cater to Easter," for instance, or "We cater to Christmas." The fundamental vision of them would stay cohesive.
Okay. So you're going to get a turkey on Thanksgiving. You're going to get Santa Claus on Christmas. The Easter bunny for...
We cater to Shamrocks and so on.
Good call. Mel?
Chris, when I, when I saw this, I instantly went to, I think, the intended message. I wonder if this is about catering, so, you know, besides the word, I mean, it's got, it's got some different meanings. But I'm, I'm curious, you're saying you're getting into the business of catering, right? You're a grocery store now and you want to start doing catering, events, receptions, that kind of stuff?
Catering's always been a part of the business. It's an area we need to grow.
You want to grow. Okay, so would you be competing like with Dolls or Hy-Vee that do something similar?
You know, at the, at the risk of...
You mean the competition?
I, I would say, I would say that we have been in full-service catering competition for, since 2007 when we opened. These would be more along the lines of not grab-and-go catering, but full-service delivery catering for weddings.
And again, just, just kind of thinking out loud here, so it, it brings me to a question then. So, we've got Dolls on Ingersoll. So if Dolls said, "Well, we want to promote our catering more because we got to compete against Chris now," and they wanted to put signs up, you know, right now it's, it's not allowed. So if we would let you do it, why should we not let Dolls do it?
I would agree.
Or, or why would we not let Hy-Vee do it? Or if we've got Pepsi specials... Or if we've got Pepsi specials at Hy-Vee and they want to post Pepsi signs, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, I, I like your intent, but I think in understanding as, I know a lot of the things you do here, here in Des Moines, to me, this gets us down a slope. Well, you let Chris do it, so then why can't I do it? I'd maybe need a little better reasoning than, "We want to expand our business, so we want to advertise more on our own property."
Well, and I think all of those are, are great valid reasons, and I would think that they should be allowed to as well, but I, I more speak to the point that all of downtown and the East Village allows these banners every 10 feet, so.
Which, which I might disagree with, and they are under some different zoning districts as well, so.
Right. So, that's what brings us here today.
I, I would say I might agree with you if you see them, and I'm not sure if you do or don't like them, but.
Well, you know, more to the point, Mel, perhaps Palmer's would be a better example of, you know, a competitor.
Sure. Sure.
The, you could, maybe we could limit it to premises that have 48,100 square feet or less.
The reverse of liquor licensing.
There we go.
Okay. All right. But just, just thanks for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
To what Tom says, you do have this space. This locale does have, I mean, it's, it's a huge parking lot. It's not like some of the other parking lots that you have to, it's much, much more confined.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? We're going to have two good cases coming up here pretty quick. Yes?
Sue Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the City of Des Moines Board Chair. I would argue that the board not allow this as a use, as was previously pointed out, the city went through, I know years ago, an extensive review of side ordinance, trying to get signs regulated and under control, so we didn't have proliferation of signs everywhere. You can see these in used car lots. If you start down this slope, you could see them on every lot that has a light pole in it. I think that kind of flies in the face of what the ordinance is trying to do, which is restrict overage of signage on parcels. The signs on the street for special events are a totally different thing, approved by council through a whole different set of standards for public interest or advertising for public good. I just, I just argue, again, the slippery slope that's previously been mentioned by the board members. Boy, you know, you start this and you could have these everywhere. Not that this isn't a great location. Love the restaurant and shop there as often as I can, but the, the whole zoning thing, you know, and the enforcement of signs, if you start this, it, it could just blow up, so.
Okay. Chris, normally, we don't let you have to talk again, but because this was brought forth from, from Sue Ann, if you want to rebut that at all or do you have any closing comments or you're happy where you're at or?
I guess the only thing I would add is it's, it's not just for events downtown. Meredith has them for Meredith and so on and so forth. I mean, businesses do actually use these banners throughout downtown. Our competitors use similar things in the suburbs. This is, this is an example of one area where I think we have an opportunity to make it easier to do business within the city than, than not. And from, from our perspective, it's well-contained within our property and we, we would understand a little differently if we were trying to put something along MLK or Woodland, but from our perspective, we're looking for the variance because it's within our, within our property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision. I'll just throw this out, most everybody I think was here. Is it the First Church of the Nazarene, the ones on Beaver and Hickman, Cindy? First open?
Open Bible.
Yeah, yeah. We did it for them probably about three years ago. And, you know, I, I drive past there four or five times a day and I'm challenged that it even jumps out at me. I hardly ever see it. And then even when you, my voting place is right next door at Calvin Manor, I don't even look up and see them anymore. And, and I'm usually one of the people that gets kind of agitated about visual clutter. And I'm not seeing that in the presentation here, and I didn't, I definitely don't see it at, at the Church on Beaver and Hickman. I don't see an issue with that. If he was out on the street, yeah, we can, we can talk about that. And to Sue Ann's point, I agree with her too, but is it a slippery slope? We, we got the, we can put the brakes on anytime. Every case is individual. Every case is different. If Dolls came in, I, I think they wouldn't have as much leverage, but I, I like what he's done. It, it does, it's not obtrusive and it's to promote a business. It's inside. I don't see a problem. That's just mine.
Well, I don't see a problem except, you know, when you get to, to make comments and stuff about what you'd like to see, I'd like to see the signs changed at least four times a year. Just to kind of stir up the energy.
Seasonal.
You know?
Anybody else?
Is it the right number of signs or is it too many signs?
Too many.
Installation of up to eight banner signs.
It's nine altogether.
Right.
You get two and you want seven.
Okay. So, is that four too many or six too many or two too many?
Seven too many.
Seven too many.
That's why it's a variance.
Right. But it, I'm just thinking of sign clutter.
Mm-hmm. And, and, you know, and even down in your, at the, what, the Applebee's, you know, with the constitutional sign when you pull up?
It's art.
There we go.
Yeah. Because there's, because there's no words on it.
There's no logo.
Yeah. 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 I mean, this, this has direct wording. It has direct advertising now. And, you know, if, if I parked in the lot and came in to eat lunch and saw a sandwich board out front, which you'd probably need some kind of, well, a, a permanent sign out front that was permitted, that said, "We, we do catering," I'd see that. When I'm in the parking lot, you go into the store. So, if you had a pronounced sign as you came in the store, I'd get it. But I think what you're trying to do is you're still trying to reach people who are probably driving by and we're putting a little extra flag out there. So, as much as I like what, what they're doing, I don't want car dealers or other grocery stores or people of similar size that are really nice businesses coming to us saying, "Well, you did it here." I want it there.
They'd still have to tell us why they.
I, I, I know, and that's a lot of cases.
And you know how well a, a statement, "Well, you did it here, so you got to do it here," goes over.
I, 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 I don't buy into precedent 100%, but, you know, we, we've had cases before. They get in front of us and they want to use a previous one as their precedent. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. At first, I thought, well, is it an issue of, you know, based on the way the MLK slopes coming down or up and how the building sits, do they need some more signage for something? But kind of seeing this approach, it's, it's more than just a picture. It's, we've got direct wording on it here.
Well, like I say, Mel, I, I hate visual clutter more than anything.
So, if, if they put up a picture of a turkey, you wouldn't, you wouldn't object to that. And if you put up a picture of Santa Claus.
I'd have to consider that.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't object to that.
I remember, right? I think, I think the church just had doves or a star or a heart or something, but.
Because that's art.
Yeah. Well, I, based on what I'm seeing here in the intent of the ordinance, I've, I've already made my stake. I don't need to take up your time.
I think we know where we're headed. So, I'll put a motion in that we grant the variance of seven freestanding signs over the maximum two as a variance.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed?
With due respect, I'll say.
Thank you. Motion carries four to one. Again, Mel speaks from his heart, so I hope you take into account that he's serious about making those things have some taste to it.
And, and Chris does as well, so I'm sure it'll be done, done very nicely.
But I need those signs so I can remember where I parked my car.
That's a different issue, Linda.
Just remember what Tom said, we'd like to see every four months.
Park next to the bunch. No idea.
Item 12 is a conditional use permit in vicinity of 3808 Douglas.
Item number 12 is a, it's an existing limited food sales establishment, otherwise known as a grocery store, that they currently have beer sales, but they want to expand the footprint of their business. And in accordance with the amended alcohol regulations from last year, any small grocery store selling any beer, wine, or liquor has to have a conditional use permit. So, this op, or this business has been allowed to operate as a grocery store selling beer or wine without a conditional use permit, but it's this expansion that is triggering them to have to come to this board. The subject property is the Goldenland Grocery Store within the Strip Commercial Center at the corner of Douglas Avenue and 38th Street. There's a mix of, I believe, three, total of three small grocery stores, as well some offices and baseball card stores and a few other. This is a diagram of what they're proposing. Right now, I believe they have a 20-foot wide area within the business. They're proposing to expand it up to 46 feet by 50 feet deep. And when the applicant gets up here, I'll probably ask that they explain who their primary customers are, because right now they're operating as a retail business, meaning their customers need to just be mostly people coming in off the street. But we've heard from a neighbor who believes that it's mostly wholesale, selling to restaurants. So, if they are in fact primarily selling to restaurants, there may be other issues. But for now, we're operating under the assumption that they are a retail business, which is permitted in the C1 district, so. Here's a photo of the commercial center as it is, appears today. The business is right around here. They'd be expanding to the bay next to where they are. There's this same building from another angle.
I just, no, the cool places across the street.
Then this is looking west from 38th Street. You can see there's a drive aisle behind the building and it actually is a walkout basement here, which the applicant has some space on the bottom floor of the building as well. They do have a rear entrance back here. And, and doing some, looking into this, we've found that occasionally semis making deliveries to this grocery store come off of Douglas Avenue and they block traffic in Douglas Avenue. So, I did call them yesterday and made sure that they're aware that's not allowed and that the police could give them a ticket if they are blocking traffic. I was just pointing this out because I might want to see if they would be up for having deliveries brought in through the backside. And here's the consent map. Staff believes that this is an appropriate location for a grocery store selling beer. Since it's zoned C1, it's only able to sell wine or beer. It's not eligible for getting a conditional use permit to sell hard liquor. The requirements also require that they be 150 feet from any church, park, school, or daycare. This property does meet that separation requirement, so there's no need for a variance there. But they're also subject to the conditional use permit, and then they're subject to having no more than 40% of their sales be derived from beer or wine, so. We recommend an approval subject to these conditions, and I, I won't read through them, but they're mostly just our standard conditions. Any questions?
The only thing I've got is, if somebody pointed out it's, they might be wholesale as well, is there any way of verifying that or we just?
We wanted, I wanted to get an answer from them. I did have a phone conversation with them yesterday, but it wasn't real clear if, if the primary customer is restaurants versus walk-in traffic, so hopefully they have an answer to that.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Appicant or representative applicant?
Pretty hard, that they wholesale if they were standing under the 40%.
Wonder if we even say.
Yeah. My name is Minton. I'm the owner of the Goldenland Grocery Store.
I need your address too.
3814 Douglas Avenue, Des Moines. Yeah. Today, I come here for use condition for beer lines, beer permit. But mostly I sell for retail groceries stores. Here's a picture of the sales. This one, it's not here. This one is saved here for the grocery store. And then I think the last year I was selling this two cooler for the beer, but now I stopped selling, so I waiting for the permit from the city. So, these only two cooler I selling for the beer. So, that's me. I, I like the 5% of gross, so not over the 40%. So, that's why I request to get the permit for beer sales.
You heard the city say that a lot of times deliveries are, what, a semi, I'm assuming, that might block traffic. Have you looked into maybe using that lower level?
Yes, sir. The last year I using the, I have a basement in the, for the store gate, so I can, I can use the truck in the back, back of the, the bating. But now the city not allow me to rent the basement, so I using the store, in my, at the store. So, all the truck I'm in the front door.
Right.
So, now I have planned to do is I, I looking for the, another store gate.
Okay.
So, to, to deliver the truck.
All right.
So, now I don't got the, the space, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Any question?
Mel?
If, if you're approved to do this, will you look at changing any of your signage on the outside? Are you going to change your name or put any new signs on the building?
You mean the, the Goldenland Grocery Store?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, so, so are, are you going to advertise, "Hey, we sell beer now" or?
No, I don't have advertised anything yet because I not selling a lot of beer.
Okay. All right. So, it'll still say Golden.
Goldenland Asia Grocery Store.
All right. So, so you're really not going to change your sign outside or anything?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. And you saw our discussion with that other, like liquor store that had a bunch of stuff in the window and signs all.
I don't have that kind of stuff.
Okay. So, it'll look pretty much the same way it does now on the outside?
Yes.
Okay. You'll just have these two coolers inside where you sell the beer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
John Knapp, 4504 63rd Street in Urbendale. I'm a partner in this building. I'm here to support Min in his application. I don't have really anything else to add. I think he's, he's, one of the things I guess I should add is that this is not a liquor store or a tobacco outlet. This is a grocery store. And you can see by the photos that Min had, this is really a, it's an Asian ethnic grocery store. And it, the intent is not to just start selling beer. He's going to have two small coolers that he'll sell beer to his clients, and it's more of a service. It's more of a, an ancillary product. And I think Min told me a little bit earlier, he was selling beer before he expanded because he was allowed to, and his sales were about 5% for alcohol. So, it's, it's not a, it's not a huge item for him. It's more of a service.
Okay. And I'm kind of curious, Mr. Knapp, even, even with the alcohol he was selling or wants to sell, it's not like he's going to blow Coors Light out of here probably. Do you think maybe more specialty beers or?
I, I don't.
Or is there an intent?
No. I, I think he had domestic beers. I, I think.
Okay. I, I was just curious if this was more like, you know, from a cultural or ethnic perspective, you know, specialty beers or?
I, I don't think it's specialty. Min, maybe you can address that, but.
No.
Yeah.
It's only a domestic beer, so not for special beer, you know?
No. Just, just kind of the regular domestic. Okay. All right.
And I want to add also that in no way do I want a liquor store in this building. I mean, that's, I don't want that in the neighborhood. I don't want that mix with the other tenants here. This is, this is a grocery store and I, I intend to keep it that way as a landlord, so I don't want the issues to crop up with a.
Nice to have the landlord here, so. Nice to have the landlord here, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hi, I've never done this before, so be patient with me. My name is Vicky Scholler. I live at 3909 Douglas, which is directly catty-cornered from the strip mall there. We are a neighborhood. We have grandchildren, grandkids, we have little children, babies, lots of old people. And it may seem that we live on Douglas Avenue, but we are a very, very close community and really watch out for each other. My, and all of them, I think, except for one that Mr. Knapp owns, right next to that, are all homeowners. We keep up our yards, we do, we watch out after each other. We have a few single people. Between 38th and 39th, that whole area up there, we are a community on both sides of the street, even though you would think it really isn't a neighborhood. Our main concern is, I've talked to many of them, and they have talked to me, and they were not able to either come today because they work, or mainly, well, that's it, or they're too old to come and stay to sit this long. If you really want to know the truth.
And we aren't laughing at them.
What about us?
Not that I can spend the whole afternoon here either, okay.
Right.
But our main concern is probably with this is Douglas Avenue. It's a very, very busy street. We have the Polk County, you know, office building down by the old Target. We have a Hy-Vee store that sells liquor. We have Plaza Lanes that sells liquor. We have a come-and-go down there that sells liquor. And we don't have a lot of semis, believe it or not, except when the weather's bad, and they have to come in to go, you know, and they can't go into free, the interstate or the freeway. We really don't have a lot of semis. At the other end, we have two corners. We have Walgreens and Casey's that are open 24 hours to sell liquor. And on the corner, catty-cornered, before long, we will have a Hy-Vee that sells liquor 24 hours a day, beer and wine and other things. Since Vets Hospital has expanded, we have noticed a lot more people walking, and, you know, which is fine. Most of us do volunteer down there. But our main concern is when these trucks deliver, they do cause great confusion on the street. It can be at 8 o'clock in the morning, it can be at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it can be at any time. And when they pull into the parking lot, try to maneuver their van, semi, big semis, to get into this van, cross that little tiny parking lot, they have to move the other cars, and the front of their cab sticks out into Douglas so that traffic, of course, is blocked while they're trying to get in there. And there's a street light there, which makes it even worse. And they go, you know, and they finally get in there, it's blocking half of the inside lane. So then you have Douglas, you have the traffic that's coming down Douglas has to merge, all of a sudden, into another lane. They're white panel, huge semis. We've had so many motorcycle wrecks and so many fatalities, and we have children that walk there. One of the nice businesses that is in there, and they're all nice, is skateboarders. You know, we go, one of them's going to not make it, you know, with the semi coming through, and they're trying to go down the hill, and you have a place that sells skateboards, so they all commute there. The parking lot does not hold that, that many cars. This particular place, they have, they have more than one storefront. They have two storefronts. They have a basement, which I presume the 100-pound bags of something are made.
About one more minute.
Okay, they're, they're putting down there. We see many Asian-type restaurants with names on their vans, things like that delivered. And our other, the other problem, the problem, we don't need alcohol. We don't need any more alcohol on there. And I'm not a teetotaler. It's the traffic, the parking lot is not big enough, the people in there not speak English, I don't know how they're checking IDs, and there are a lot of children. There's Hoover, Meredith, everybody that walks down there. And the people that are in there are very nice, but they don't speak English. I don't know how they can check an ID. The other thing is, when they unload these trucks, there's like maybe one or two trucks or vans come, and there are men and young boys, maybe young girls too, but they're young children, 12 and 13, maybe even 11, unloading these huge 100-pound bags, and they form like a, you know, long line, you know, conveyor belt type thing. And we have a lot of questions about that, and it takes a good two hours to unload this truck.
Okay, got to cut you off now.
Okay.
But now, one thing, one, have you, one of the things that we base a lot of our decisions on, what city staff pulls together is the crime view of the area.
Yes, can I ask?
You can even, you can see it if you want to.
Okay.
It doesn't have anything in there that they've done.
Well, the last three years, believe me. Okay, when you go down the hill on the side next to a residential home?
You can keep them.
Okay, thank you. There's, you know, like garbage cans down there, great big dumpsters, whatever you call them. There have been drug raids there, there have been drug arrests there in, in the last five to 10 years. There have, you, if you walk through there, you find all of these little packets of this K2 stuff or whatever it is. You know, you find many of those, just laying on the, and it's dark, they go down there and they drink, especially the people that are walking now. So in order for them to, you know, say they buy a six-pack, they can go right down there, they don't have a car, they go down there and they're going to drink. And that, that's, that's worrisome. I have grandchildren, we have babies that live across the street, three doors from it, and to say it's not a problem. The motel on the corner, you know, right across from the strip mall, is not a real nice place. And just three weeks ago, I think it was, they, this had prostitution in it, it has had a lot of crime, it's had different owners. Somebody stole a whole bunch of lottery tickets, and they were hiding, throwing them out the windows in the back, and they arrested them. They have found counterfeiters there, everything imaginable, and a lot of drugs.
Vicky, you know, the only thing that we have, the, I mean, I've listened to everything, but we're limited in our scope of what we can vote on.
Uh huh.
The thing that we can vote on is whether to expand it.
Yes.
And still keeping everything, the liquor sales, the beer sales, in that tight compartment that they've got, or not to let them expand.
Well, they already have two. They want three, plus they have the basement. Before long, the whole place will be that, and we won't have our nice little, it's not like commercial. It is a heavy-duty store, and there are heavy-duty people. I don't know very, very many people that are going to buy 100-pound bags of rice or what other grain it's in there. And I, when they come off of these vans, you know they're downstairs, you know, and they're taking them. Find it very hard to believe. Thank you, though.
No, that's fine.
And you're, you've got the greatest business in the world if you can sit here all day and listen to this. That's all I got to say.
Best job in the world, I'll tell you. Is there anybody else out here to speak in opposition?
I'll take that as a compliment.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Any last questions for staff? Eric Knapp will close the public portion, go to board decision.
Well, Mr. Chair, just one point of note here, I think in all this, we, the word liquor was mentioned a lot, and, and Vicky had mentioned liquor, and there might be some places that sell liquor, and et cetera, et cetera, but this is just, this is just wine and beer here. This, he would not be allowed to sell what's called hard, hard liquor, so.
Well, I worry about the underage, and I worry about the foreign rights.
Well, and, and no one can ever sell to an underage person by law to begin with. So we've, you know, just to try to keep this, keep this into account, I, I know a lot of time we've discussed, we've discussed a lot of alcohol-related issues here in the last few months, but, and as we said in the last item, every situation is a little bit different. This sounds to me like an ancillary sales. If I come in and want to buy something as a, as, you know, for my weekend dinner or my specialty dinner, I might come here and buy some of this beer. If he's selling stuff to a restaurant, they're probably going to work directly with a beer distributor to buy their beer at wholesale prices.
There are the beer companies that may be on, running around.
So from that perspective, Mr. Chair, and between the board, I'd be open to any other conversations folks have, but, you know, from the liquor perspective, that's not part of our, our request here.
Just an expansion of the business.
Yes.
That's all we can vote on.
Okay.
Okay.
Move staff recommendation. Okay.
Could I second that with two friendly amendments here?
Okay.
Could we ask for an amendment that delivery shall not block any public street?
Well, it's illegal anyway, so.
Well, I realize it's, it's illegal, but have we put that in just as nice, friendly reminders before?
Is it enforceable, Jason?
I mean, I, you know.
Not enforceable by the zoning officer.
Well, that's definitely true.
Well, can we say they need to deliver to the lower level?
I don't want to get into that, because then that gets confusing, too.
Well, it is confusing.
And, and that's up to Mr. Knapp.
For maneuvering.
Yeah. If, if Mr. Knapp has an issue where the deliveries are blocking the other tenants or customers, then Mr. Knapp won't have, his, his other tenants will get mad. But I just don't want trucks on the street if it's already illegal, and maybe Min can watch that a little bit better, or, or Vicky can call the police when that happens. Okay.
Okay. So you're seconding?
Uh, yeah.
Is there a friendly amendment now, or is it?
Is there another friendly amendment?
The only other thing, I wanted to just maybe limit the coolers to more than, no more than six foot in width. I mean, he said just this, and I know we had a discussion with one of them about.
I think that's going to be tough to enforce, don't you, Mel?
I would.
Then I will just second it with those five staff recommendations.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. The reason I wanted to stick around, Vicky, is if you've got these kind of issues, talk to Sue Ann back there and explain to her, she's a zoning enforcement officer. So if, if there's issues that are taking place that's causing trouble in the neighborhood, she needs to know about it.
Well, we'd like to Mr. Knapp, when he does cooperate with us. Aye.
No.
Finally, for people that have been waiting out there, we appreciate it. An exception at 121 Zort Road.
Item number 13 is an appeal for exceptions to the side yard setbacks only. If you remember, this property was before you, a few months ago, at which time they were asking for five-foot side yard setbacks, as well as relief for the front yard setback, and then an exception to allow the building, the house to have a flat roof. At that time, the board approved the front yard setback and the exception to allow them to have a front roof, but the board denied the side yard setbacks, which required them to provide 10-foot side yard setbacks.
Yep.
The applicant is now, has a revised design that needs eight-foot side yard setbacks, so they only need two feet less than the minimum required, 10 feet at this time. I know these diagrams aren't the greatest for this screen, but we can kind of see the buildable area of what they're showing with, with the eight-foot setback, what allows, what they're allowed to build. And then this is not the exact house they're building, but this just gives you a general idea of the concept that they're going for with the flat roof. Here's the decision in order from December. And then also the site photo. You can see this was taken last fall as well. Not much has changed since then. In our consent map, we still have the people on both sides are opposed to the appeals. Staff has recommended approval. Now, we felt that the eight-foot setback would be adequate. We feel that the request of only two feet less than the required 10 feet is a pretty minimal request and would probably be negligible, or not really noticeable from just people driving by. So we've recommended approval, subject to four conditions. One, that they comply with the previous decision in order. Two, that they comply with the building code and get necessary permits. Three, that they, any dwelling design shall be reviewed by the planning director to determine the compatibility of the design with the surrounding neighborhood. And four, any tree removal of the single fam, for the single-family dwellings shall provide mitigation planning. Any questions?
Yeah, why did staff change its mind?
What do you mean?
Well, I thought we had a long-winded discussion back in December.
Yeah.
About, you know, how if you cut down your side yards, the requirement for side yards, why then that is really impinging on the neighbors, because of course they had to, they had to follow their, their side yard, you know?
Yeah, right.
And so now you've got, you know, a person that wants not to follow that.
Well, at that time, they were proposing five-foot setbacks, which is, it's getting a little more extreme than.
Excuse me, you approved a setback, right, too?
A front yard setback. Yeah, yeah, staff had recommended, Eric, I apologize, Eric had prepared this and couldn't be here today, so he's more familiar with it than me, but I believe staff did recommend approval of the.
The five yard.
Five-foot setbacks back then.
Okay, so Tom, they are being consistent.
Never.
Any other question? Any other questions for staff?
No.
Thanks, Bert. App can, or representative the applicant?
Good afternoon, Matt Connolly, 3105, 34th Place, Beaverdale, 50310. Tony Lomo is the applicant that I propose, or we're proposing to build this house for through my company, Generation Green Builders. It'll be a certified green project through the National Association of Home Builders. I'll just go through this real quick, and then I'll let Tony talk, just so that you guys are aware of what exactly we're looking for, for two-foot instead of the five-foot, now that we're a little further along in the project. Can I turn this light on a little bit better?
Please.
You can see it, okay?
Yeah.
Yep. We're good.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the current available footprint. Notice the 10-foot side yards. This is the eight-foot side yards. If you notice, the front on Zort, opposite of Terrace there, you'll see, you can barely see it, but that's how much we've been encroaching for our proposal for, into the two-foot side yard setbacks. So not completely taken up the two-foot. Better see it here, it's about half there, and half there, and then in red there. Can you blow that up a little bit, please? So that's basically it. And so we were meeting with the neighbors outside, and I think that we're all in agreement what they, everybody's kosher, Tony and the neighbors are cool with it, so we can go there in a minute, but first we want to tackle this with you guys as far as the two-foot setbacks go. So that's what's proposed, I just want everybody to understand that. We did some squares out there of how much that actually is in the building, of course. Tony?
Okay, can, before this gets down the road too far.
All right.
We're starting to get into some geometrics here. Can I just ask a question?
Go right ahead.
So what you're saying is even with the 10-foot side yards right now, that's all you would encroach?
That's correct.
Okay.
And at the front, not, so it doesn't impede their view toward the back, right?
Very much at the front, that's correct.
That's, that's toward, towards Zort Road, where the concerns that we heard was we can't look out our back doors and see.
Okay.
Right.
So am I clear? I mean, is that?
Yes, you're correct, and you can see the sidelines and diagonal with the X on the back of the rear of the property there. If you can blow that up a little bit, please.
Because you could move it back more. You could move back more toward.
And not need the 10-yard setback, and not need the.
Cut their view out.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, continue. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me.
Anthony Lomo, 644 18th Street. Thank you for your time today. This has been a very interesting process, to say the least. Anything I get my hands in, it always, it just requires, it's mandatory, that it's difficult and involves lawyers and many nights of sleepless nights and emotions, and I'm an emotional guy, so I'm worn out, as I know my soon-to-be neighbors are worn out. But we do have a great compromise, but just to reiterate, you know, back in December was a five-foot setback, not having a 100% clear idea where we're going with this. Today, we have a 100% clear idea what the actual footprint will be of this house. It's, what you need to consider is, is that the dimensions are pretty much locked in. It's just what we're asking for today, and their lawyer will explain that to you, what, what we've all agreed to. It's just we want a little bit of leverage room. We're asking for two, but literally we're only going a foot, maybe a foot and a couple inches, but we need some wiggle room. This is not a very conventional flat lot in suburbia. This is a lot built on a 45-degree sloped hill that has some shell, that has, you know, supposedly a coal mine, you know, coal was dug out of there back in the days. So it's, it's a very complicated lot. That's, that's why I'm here today, because I want to build a very awesome, simple house and a complicated lot. That's, I'm like, that's, that's what I do.
I'm impressed with your thinking on that.
So, that being said, there was, you know, some hesitation towards, you know, the, the five wasn't necessary. We didn't really know where we were going to drive in December, and now we know where we're going to drive. And we know to get that 47 and a half, what you see on there, the width, we do need a foot of wiggle room outside of that 10-foot variance, without a doubt. We're asking for two, or two on each side, depending on when they start. We're asking for two, two on each side, depending on when they start digging, what we find, or, you know, if we need, for instance, if the construction guys pour the footing six inches over, you know, the 10-foot setback, then we're going to be in litigation and fighting this, and, you know, we just, we want that cushion. As I told my neighbors, future neighbors, I don't want to be trapped in a mason jar here, I want to have a little wiggle room. And the happy compromise, which I won't drag this on, is that, um, as you know, the top two corners of the lot facing north, they're in the most narrowest part of this lot. It's, it's a trapezoid, it's not a perpendicular 90-degree lot. I think at our last meeting, you guys voted against it, you know, one, it was the five-foot setback, and two, there was this, you know, idea that we'd be getting, you know, the construction would be two feet pushed over on our neighbors' lots, and I completely kind of agree with that, but really, the reason why we're asking for that is not to build a suburban McDonald's mansion here, is to literally build a house that is livable, that's green, sustainable, which, you know, I'm not try, I could build a bigger house in this lot, but I'm choosing not to, I don't want to. What I do want to do is bring this house farther up to Zort, which benefits the neighbors, and they've already agreed, and they've shared that with you last meeting. I'm sharing it with you, the farther north I build up, I have a better view. Uh, it's going to cost more money to build this house to do it that way, but I gain the advantage of having this great view, not impeding their views, and you can see on these sidelines running this way. The farther north, the better for everyone. And in building this house, and it's, I'm not a soil engineer, but this house will actually stabilize the earth over there, because I know that was a concern last meeting. It's, what we have to construct is actually going to benefit, you know, both neighbors on both sides, because it's, you know, it's a buffer between the earth and the pressure pushing down southward. So, it's a win-win, and I'll let their lawyer, uh, walk you through basically what we've all agreed to. So, we're not, we're not, you know, I don't know how you guys can process this covenant agreement we have, but, you know, we all, we all agree to two-foot setbacks, it's a go, but they just want to make sure that we don't build essentially, you know, the house isn't touching the eight-foot setback towards the south part of these allowances, you know what I mean? So, I don't know how far, I don't know what you will recognize, how far you'll go with it, but we have an individual agreement, we've all signed it, initialed it, and then, you know, obviously, we need you to vote on the eight-foot setbacks, but I don't know if, you know, if you can be as specific as to say they will only go halfway. I don't know if you could do that.
You already signed it, you know. Well, just looking for what, what city staff did.
Yeah, what, I guess we want to know is, is there a universal agreement that this is going to be the placement on this lot? And so, if we put an order in that says, "This is incorporated in our order, and you, you can't vary from this..."
Yeah.
This image, no.
Yep.
This actual image, no.
Okay.
And what we have is we have, and he can speak better on it, there's a, we've calculated total linear feet-
All right.
-which will hover, total linear feet that will hover over that 10-foot allowable setback.
But you do have a written agreement?
Yes.
And everybody claims to understand it.
Yes. We've done the work for you. You don't have to be conscious.
We won't be asked later on to interpret this agreement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let, I'll stop talking.
But Anthony, I've got a question for you guys. Now, things like drip lines, building overhangs, eaves, all that plays into setbacks. Am I correct, staff? You can nod your head. Eaves and stuff play into setbacks. It's not just the footprint of where you pour your walls. If you've got four-foot eaves out...
You can have up to two-foot eaves.
You can have up to two-foot eaves, okay. And as long as everybody else understands that, I just want to make that clear. So, but yeah, I, and I realize it's a unique design and all, but...
In a perfect world, these four bearings, these four points on this document are the precise point, but we're, we're human beings, we're not, we, we create air, we're infallible.
Yeah, yeah, we...
So, we want that wiggle room without having to come back here and spend much more money and drain more emotions and waste your time.
Right.
We've all agreed to something their lawyer will present to you, and I think we can all go out and have a glass of bubbly.
Some liquor.
Thank you. I gotta follow, is there anybody here to speak? Well, let's find out. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? I think you got, yeah, if, if we got an agreement, I think that'd be support.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to leave this up for you, Mr. Bert.
It's at least consensus.
Bill Martine, 2000 Financial Center, representing both neighbors. And our concept has been that we don't really, along the way, we really didn't want to let people build outside of that, that window. But when we got to look at these plans, um, when, when Mr. and Mrs. Hopper met with Tony on Saturday, you know, we're talking about, you know, an overlap here of probably seven and a half to 10 square feet. And, you know, people, people can, I, I have, I feel a lot of respect for both my sets of clients, because they've kind of said, "We don't really don't like this," but it's, it's, there's a solution that works here. So, what we'd agreed to Saturday was that that would be the allowed setback. Your geometric point is very, very descriptive of what the solution is that's been agreed to. Then, as we were looking over the document that I prepared yesterday, Mr. Lomo said, well, and actually, his architect was saying, "What happens if because of soil sampling, we have to shift a little bit? What if we go, we can't build exactly the corners there?" We said, "Okay, we've agreed to this much, we don't agree to any more, but what we will allow you to do is to allow, allow that, um, those side setbacks to float."
Okay.
The, the agreement is, is to the width of the house is...
67 feet?
Forty-seven and a half.
Forty-seven and a half, I'm sorry. Forty-seven and a half, that's it. That can move from side to side, depending on where they can build it. Based on, our formula is, you can have an aggregate of 10 square feet in which to encroach into the, into the regular setback. And beyond that, um, it can't be, you know, by math, it's going to be two feet out on either side. Uh, we've got the parties' understanding that may benefit one, it may hurt the other one more than the other. I think we're in agreement on that. We understand what we're agreeing to is a, um, basically a solid footprint. The eaves discussion is beyond what we had talked about, but it, you know, it's allowed, it's allowed. So, um, that's our agreement, we haven't, this is our document, it's been marked up and initialled. I'm happy to leave it for a copy with the staff, uh, but that's what we've agreed to so far, but we've got a step further. And I understand that all of this geometrics may be tough to, to draft, uh, but what we've agreed is that regardless what the, what the, the board does, this is a private covenant between the parties, and it won't be built differently than that. So, we've got some flexibility built into it. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a well-thought-out solution, um, I think everybody understands it. Are there any questions about it?
Yes. Mr. Martine, have you looked at the staff recommendation on this particular item?
I don't think I have, Tom. I've looked at the, it's, looked at the, um, staff report, or looked at the, the agenda.
Jason, would you hand him the staff recommendation? What we, what I'd like to do is, is incorporate by reference the agreement between the parties.
We'd be perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, but look at the staff recommendation and...
Right here, you recommend approval, and these are committed, these two on the side.
This was up on the screen earlier, so...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, I think Tony understands that if he can't make a fit within that, within that movable window, this project doesn't work. And, and we've got that understanding, so...
So, if, for number five on the staff recommendation, the agreement of the parties is incorporated herein by this reference made a part here of?
I'd love that. I mean, that'd be fine. That's what we intended this agreement to do.
And I want to clarify something here. We would be granting the direct appeal then, the exception of two feet less than the minimum required 10-foot side yard setbacks. That's kind of the foundational thing. That is the appeal we are granting, subject to then the conditions presented, including your addition, right?
That's right.
Well, and that's, that's the, that's why we have a private covenant in here, because you feel like you have to do the two-foot...
Well, be, because I don't want to grant an appeal of 10 square feet and then get us caught up in some rhombus trapezoidal cubical geometric discussion. That is not our job here.
But that's why we put in there, it's a private covenant.
Then, you guys can agree to whatever you want beyond that and sue the pants off each other if they don't build it right, but with your agreement, will that fit in with the exception of two feet less than the minimum required 10-foot side yard setback?
Well, we can move it two feet in either direction, and in our agreement, it's going to be a triangle in that two feet. And so, at some point in time, you're going to need the two feet, but only on one little point, on one, one little point.
Okay.
Even though, even though, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, I knew that this was going to be the, the discussion that we were going to have right here, because this doesn't fit a regular...
Anthony wants to avoid sleepless nights, he'll try to build it in compliance with that.
Yeah, I understand.
And what I'd like to do is look at granting that appeal. I would have liked to just stayed where we were from last month, but it, it looks like everybody's on the right page here.
And that's one of the nice things about this. If, if, if everybody's together, I'm not going to stand in the way.
Well, if, I'll put it this way, if the, if the party's agreement isn't part of this deal, then you don't have a deal.
We'll, we'll, we'll still include it.
It's that simple, so...
We'll, we'll still include it.
Okay? I don't have anything else, thank you for your time.
I bet. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Didn't think there would be. Any last questions for staff? I think we beat this to death, folks.
Yeah.
Close the public portion, go to board decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend, I'd, I'd move staff recommendation with the added condition that the agreement between the parties, which will be copied before Mr. Martine leaves the room, is incorporated herein and by this reference made a part here of.
I'll second.